Is there any objection? The Chair is non. Privilege hour is now open.
Madam Speaker, I move for a one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Madam Speaker.
Session resume. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. Privilege hour is suspended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business and direct the Secretary to please read the resolutions and the bills on first reading.
The Secretary General is directed to read bills on first reading.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading. House Bill Number 4801, declaring the month of January every year as Visayan Heritage Month. Representative Lagun.
To the Committee on Visayas Development.
House Bill Number 4802, extending the maximum allowable period for probationary employment. Representative Singzon.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number 4803, converting the satellite office of the LTO located in Nitaux, Misamis Oriental into a regular LTO office. Representative Uy Juliet.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 4804, exempting the capital town of a province without a city from the requisites for its conversion into a component city. Representative Panotes.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 4805, granting survivorship benefits to surviving legitimate spouse of a deceased chairperson, commissioner, or labor arbiter of the NLRC. Representative Nograles Jerico.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Numbers 4806 and 4809, strengthening the Office of the Government Corporate Council. Representatives Romero, Pineda, and Velasco.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 4807, rationalizing the economic regulation of water utilities, creating the Water Regulatory Commission. Representative Velasco.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and to the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 4808, transferring the Food and Drug Administration from the DOH to the Office of the President. Representatives Juan Sing Estradita and Juan Sing Horacio.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 4810, expanding the purposes and application of the Special Education Fund. Representative Alonte.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 4811, expanding the coverage of the mandatory basic immunization program and providing a system in the determination of other types of vaccine-preventable diseases. Representative Alonte.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 4812, creating and establishing the Philippine Youth and Sports Department. Representative Giko.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill Number 4813, requiring all graduating senior high school and college students to plant two trees, each as a civic duty for environment protection and preservation. Representative Gomark.
To the Committee on Reforestation.
House Bill Number 4814, creating the Department of Overseas Filipino Workers. Representative Totor.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill Number 4815, providing mandatory enlistment, reservice, training-ready utilization program of the citizens' armed forces of the AFP. Representative Halushos.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill Number 4816, regulating the trade of electronic nicotine and non-nicotine delivery systems and heated tobacco products. Representatives Singzon Mian and Esabiliyan.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry and to the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 4817, establishing a national high school in Marcos Santa, Iloco Sewer, to be known as Santa National High School. Representative Singzon Mihan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 4818, requiring all subdivisions, condominiums, community malls, government institutions, central business districts, and information technology parks in the Philippines to construct rain harvesting facilities. Representative Momo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 4818, exempting public school teachers from income tax. Representative Giko.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Number 4820, prohibiting any act of vandalism. Representative Giko.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 4821, creating the Home for the Homeless. Representative Giko.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill Number 4822, amending further Article 97 of the Revised Penal Code. Representative Flores.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 4823, providing for a fair and reasonable public utility jeepney modernization program. Representative Aglipay.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 4824, establishing and institutionalizing long-term care for senior citizens. Representatives Kapagal Arroyo and Arroyo.
To the Special Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill Number 4825, protecting children from cigarette smoke exposure. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 4826, declaring May 17 of every year as the National Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill Number 4827, mandating the use of recyclable materials for the packaging of consumer products. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 4828, institutionalizing an emergency medical service system. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 4829, providing 20% discount for poor job applicants in the payment of fees and charges for certain certificates and clearances issued by government agencies. Representatives Malapitan, Maceda, Martinez Nieto, and Valeriano.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number 4830, creating the Department of Water Resources. Representative Lim.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 4831, declaring July 27 of every year a special, non-national, non-working holiday in commemoration of the founding anniversary of the Iglesia ni Cristo Act. Representative Deloso Montalán.
To the Committee on Revision of Loss.
House Bill Number 4832, upgrading the pension benefits under the GSIS. Representative Nograles Jerico.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privateation.
House Bill Number 4833, amending EO Number 209, otherwise known as the Family Code of the Philippines. Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill Numbers 4834 to 4838, converting various elementary schools into integrated schools in the province of Davao Occidental. Representative Bautista Bendigan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Resolutions. House Resolution 374, directing the House Committees on Human Rights and Welfare of Children to investigate on the documented cases of grave child rights violations under the current administration and recommend measures to protect and promote the rights and welfare of children at all times. Representatives Brosas, Zarate, Kulyamat, Gaite, Castro, Franz, and Elago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 375, urging the national government to allocate and release a supplemental budget for the NFA in the amount of 10 billion pesos for the purpose of aiding our local farmers through the buying of palay and providing financial assistance to ease the effects of the drop in gate price of palay as a result of the influx of imported rice in the market. Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Resolution 376, urging the DOH to conduct a comprehensive nationwide vaccination against polio. Representative Charmiento.
To the Committee on Health.
House Resolution 377, directing the appropriate House Committee to inquire on the utilization of all dispersed funds as well as the status of the recovery, reconstruction, and rehabilitation of Marawi City. Representative Torres Gómez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 378, commending and congratulating the Sunfull Foundation in its advocacy to promote positivity, respect, and compassion in the use of social media and to fight all forms of cyberbullying, especially among young children. Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Resolution 379, directing the Committee on Trade and Industry to inquire on the alleged continued smuggling and proliferation of standard steel products in the Philippines resulting from the collusion between large steelmakers and officials of the DTI and the BOC. Representative Fortun.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 308, directing the Committee on Transportation to investigate on the impending demolition of thousands of houses to give way for the NLEX/ESLEX Connector Road in the PNR North-South Railway Project. Representatives Zarate, Gaite, Kulyamat, Brosas, and Bagat Sing.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 381, directing the Committee on Trade and Industry to inquire on the propriety and implementing DOH AO 2019-0007, asserting its economic effect on trade and commerce, and to determine whether a longer period of time must be accorded to conduct further consultation on the appropriate regulation of ends. Representatives Garbin and Marcoletta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 382, honoring and commending Filipino teachers on the occasion of the 2019 National Teachers Month. Representative Fortuno.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 383, directing the House Committee on Agriculture and Food to investigate on the spread of the African Swine Fever in the Philippines and its possible disastrous effects on the local hog industry. Representatives Zarate, Gaite, and Kulyamat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 384, directing the appropriate committee to investigate on the disbursement of the bounty intended for the witnesses for the prosecution in relation to the murder of Honorable Rodel Batakabe. Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 385, urging the proper committee of the House to investigate on the tragedy met by the Dragon Boat Team during their training in Barachay, Malay, Aklad. Representative Marquez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 386, recognizing the importance of the 2019 Asian Republic of Korea Commemorative Summit and welcoming the bilateral summit between the President of the Republic of the Philippines and the President of the Republic of Korea. Representatives Hofer, Kayatan, No, Maya Laarni, Sagarbaria, Rivera, Vargas Alfonsa, and Abuez Saldivar.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Communications. Letter dated August 27, 2019 of Rolando Banghalando, State Auditor 3, Audit Team Leader, COA, furnishing the House of copies of the final audit report for calendar years 2017, 2018 of the various water districts.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Report. Committee Report Number 31 of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education on House Bill Number 4851.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, today being a Monday and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The privilege hour is now open. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Partilis representative, the Honorable Bernadette Herrera, for her privileged speech. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Bernadette Herrera D of the Partilis BH is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My esteemed colleagues, friends, stakeholders, and guests, greetings and good afternoon. We are facing an epidemic of negligence, and I believe that urgency is our best antidote. Recently, we, with the Department of Health, the 10 Rotary International Justics in the country, and our colleagues and fellow advocates, have launched the End Polio Now campaign with the initiative of conducting a nationwide vaccination program for all children across the country below the age of five, so that's zero to 49 months of age. As a former vice chair of the House Committee on the Welfare of Children in the previous Congress, I take a personal passion in actively advocating for the safety and health of our children. Former U.S. President John F. Kennedy once said, "Describe children as living messages we send to a time we will not see." The primary goal of our campaign is to create a conducive environment where the health of children is free from imminent threats. If I may borrow the ancient words of Latin writer Publius Siroz, "Good health and good sense are two of life's greatest blessings." Indeed, common sense to deter our problems is just as important as optimal health itself. I stand before you on an issue of public health and concern, one that is mind-boggling in nature. Since the launch of the Global Polio Eradication Initiative in 1988, cases of wild poliovirus have decreased by over 99%. I repeat, 99% from an estimated 350,000 cases then to just 33 reported cases in 2018. Thirty-three cases na lang po ang polio sa buong mundo. In fact, the last known poliovirus in the Philippines was in 1993. And in year 2000, WHO declared our country as polio-free. These were significant milestones for the health of our population. Yet, we are taking a step backwards. As recent as a few weeks ago, the DOH announced the emergence of polio, when a confirmed case of a three-year-old girl in Lanau del Sur surfaced. Subsequently, another case was reported of a five-year-old boy in Laguna. Both return of the disease as well as the locations of the resurgence are of significant concern. After nearly two decades, who would expect that our nation's polio-free status would become so fragile? While the global effort to eradicate this highly contagious disease has been progressing, how is it that we are the only country that is regressing? In a short period of time, we have already caught international attention, and it's placed under external pressure, as WHO expressed that it was very concerned of the resurgence of the infectious disease in the country, which UNICEF described as deeply disconcerting. Yet, the return of polio did not occur overnight. According to DOH, to ensure that the entire population is protected against polio, a 95% target of vaccine coverage is required. Last year, however, vaccine coverage for the third dose of oral polio vaccine was at 66% only, dropped to 66% only, for each child that remains infected. Children across the country are at a great risk of contracting the disease. Infants who utter their first words will struggle to breathe, toddlers who should be taking their early steps could be paralyzed, and children who ought to be playing and enjoying their childhood can become incapacitated. There are several factors that have put our country's children at risk. The lack of public trust in vaccines, limited vaccination coverage, poor early detection of symptoms, funding shortages, and inferior sanitation practices. As a matter of fact, 7% still openly defecate in public, and this is one of the things that we have to address, hence I'm calling also on LGUs to ensure that we have zero defecation in the country. Although these reasons explain the comeback of polio, they are not an excuse for us to fall behind in the global effort to obliterate the disease once and for all. How many times do we need to repeat the same mistakes for us to learn? Or to put it this way, how many of our children's lives are we willing to be taken from us before we act diligently? Because that is what our idleness is costing us. This is why we need to implement more strategic measures, and I welcome the house-to-house campaign of DOH to do the Sabayang Patak on October 14 to 25 in NCR, in the Region 3, Region 4A in Lanau in Davao, and hopefully in the rest of the country. The target is October 14 to 25, and I encourage everyone to please work with your health centers to ensure that all children below five years old will be vaccinated and will receive the oral polio vaccine. Those two will be given November 18 to 28, and another dose should be given by December or January. Our children need to accept the three doses of vaccine so that we will be prevented from having polio back in the Philippines again. We still have our polio-free status. Let us not allow it to be taken away from our country. Doing so entails the sufficient funding, proper stocking of vaccines, accessibility to healthcare centers, and the adequate man tower for the population group. In addition, we are restoring public's confidence in the anti-polio movement and other government vaccination programs by educating parents and caregivers on the importance of prevention. My dear colleagues, we have to educate our parents that our vaccines for below five years old are safe. We cannot allow this to go down 95%, otherwise various diseases will come back to our country. WHO reported that failure to eradicate polio from the last remaining strongholds could result in as many as 200,000 new cases every year within 10 years all over the world. On a more optimistic note, 18 million people are able to walk today, who would otherwise have been paralyzed, according to UNICEF. Meanwhile, 1.5 million childhood deaths have been avoided thanks to polio vaccines, and this ensures how safe polio vaccines are. Almost 20 million people have benefited from this already. Vaccines not only protect the child who receives it, but all those around the vaccinated child. There may not be a cure for polio, but preventing it ensures us a promising future for our young ones. Therefore, I ask this body and my colleagues here to provide the necessary amount needed, and I am happy that Speaker Alan Kayatan, together with Appropriations Chair Sid Ungab and all our colleagues, have agreed and allowed to add 250 million budget for our polio eradication vaccine drive, but we still need more, and I am calling on my colleagues to help us ensure that we can really do the massive vaccination for the 5.5 million children below five years old in our country and keep them safe from the poliovirus. We have a duty to each child, no matter where they live and regardless of their socioeconomic status, a chance for a brighter future. I now ask all of you to join me in helping educate ourselves, our families, our health officials, our leaders, our friends in the press, all Filipinos, to end polio now and forever in our country. We simply must protect our children in order for a true and positive change to begin within our youth. Let me end these words by former President Barack Obama. Change will not come if we wait from some other person or if we wait for some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. So to all my colleagues, let us end polio now and forever and ensure that we will forever keep the polio status of our country. Maraming salamat po, and may God bless us all and the Filipino people.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Lito Atiensa from Buha Partilis for his interpretation. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Representative Lito Atiensa of Buha Partilis is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Salamat po, Majority Floor Leader, and with the kind indulgence of the gentle lady who delivered a very important, critical message, I'd like to ask some clarificatory questions.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would gladly accept questions.
You were emphasizing that the danger now facing our children, and that is the danger of contracting polio, a disease that has already been eradicated in many parts of the world and eradicated in the Philippines for quite some time now. Are you saying that it is now recurring?
We have, through you, Madam Speaker, as of the moment, we have two cases, one in Lanau del Sur and one in Laguna.
And you would call the attention now of Congress specifically and the national leadership even, to take note of this, otherwise, baka lumala. Ganun po ba?
Yes, Madam Speaker, kailangan pong bigyan talaga ng tuon at pansin ito dahil importante 'yung vaccination program ay tanggapin ng mga bata, ng mga magulang para nam po sa ganun, hindi po kumalat. As of now, according to WHO, with these two cases, we still have our polio-free status. Pero pag ito po ay kumalat at dumami, baka mawala po ang polio-free status natin at delikado po ang ating mga children.
Ang tinatawagan ninyo ng pansin ay mga bata? Sila po ba ang pupunta sa health center at nagpapabakuna o 'yung mga magulang na dapat isama 'yung kanilang mga anak?
Tinatawagan ko po ang kanilang mga magulang na talagang dalhin sa mga health centers ang kanilang mga anak, at DOH din po para siguraduhin na 'yung Sabayang Patak ay gagawin natin ng tuluyan at massive sa buong Pilipinas na po, at hindi lamang dun sa binanggit nila na regions, but it has to be a nationwide Sabayang Patak program katulad po nung ginawa natin noon, kaya naeradicate natin ang polio sa ating bansa.
Sa tingin po ba ninyo, maraming buo, maraming probinsya, maraming area sa bansa, ang hindi nagpapabakuna ngayon?
According po dun sa report ng DOH, 66% po ang ibinaksak ng polio vaccination rate, and 'yung po polio, 'yung vaccination in general, 72% po ang ibinaba from the 95% status na dapat iminentin po natin.
Madam Speaker, kanina'y narinig ko po ang kagalang-galan na Kongresista Bernadette Herrera D na siya'y nananawagan dagdagan ang pondong ang DOH para sa bakuna. Tama po ba 'yung narinig ko?
Bali, ang nagiging concern po kasi, lagi naman po tayong may pondong para sa vaccines ng below five years old. It is embedded in our budget. Pero dahil because of this polio vaccine, baka po pumila rin sa OPV 'yung mga bata above five years old na kailangan din nating proteksyonan. That's why it's necessary to add funds also para po dun sa ibang bata na nangangailangan din ang vaccine who are not covered by the below-five-years-old, not covered by our law that we passed dun sa Immunization Act po natin. At the same time, dahil sya po ay naexpect po natin that this will really be a massive campaign, kung kaya nating i-100%, and according to Secretary Duque, pero I still have to verify, sabi niya mga 800 million pa 'yung kailangan niya para dito, but I'm still asking for supporting documents when it comes to this po.
Mga magaan po kaya, Madam Speaker, ang dapat may dagdag upang maging sapad para sa sinasabi ninyong pagharap sa problema.
Ang initial po na sinabi sa akin ni Secretary Duque is 800 million po.
Magkano po?
800 million.
800 million. Ang unang tanong ko po, Madam Speaker, papaano natin dadagdagan ngayon ang 800 million ang pondong ng DOH para sa bakuna, esamantalang inapurbahanan natin on third reading nung isang araw ang National Budget for 2020? Di po ba mas magandang ito'y pasok natin sa supplemental budget? Sapagat kung hahabulin ninyo 'yung budget na nakaraan, palagay ko'y magiging iligal na po yun. Sapagat hindi na pwedeng amyandahan ang naaprubahan. Tama po ba 'yung pananaw ng inyong linggo, o sa tingin nyo'y tama kayo na inaprubahan nyo 'yung budget madalian na hindi natin ipinasok lahat ng kailangan?
Madam Speaker, pagdating po sa budget na inaprubahan dito, palagay ko may mas tamang tao ang sumagat po dito sa bagay na'to, pero meron pa namang pung bycam na pwede po nating iapila ang pag-increase ng budget, at dahil ito namang po ay isang crisis, humihingi po ako ng pagkakataon na baka namang ito ay mabigyan ng tuon at pansin at merong ibang pagkuhanan ng pondong.
Ang inyong linggo ay naniniwala, ang pagbuo ng isang national budget ay ginagawa ng tama, na may mga proseso upang lahat ng mga pagkuhulang na nakikita ng Kongreso ay naipapasok sa pagdidibati rito. Hindi po 'yung paghabol sa bycam, paghabol sa printing, pagamyenda pagkatapos ng approval, lahat po 'yan ay doubtful, to say the least. Maaari pong madiklarang iligal, kaya kung talagang meron tayong pagmamalasaki, eh dapat giniglalaban natin 'yung tamang paraan dito sa Kongreso. Ang budget na nanggagaling sa DBN, hindi perfect 'yan. Wala po sila ng damdamin katotoo. Wala po sila ng damdamin katulad na meron kayo. Wala sila ng pinagsama-samang damdamin ng mga halal ng bayan. Kaya, tama po kayo, ng rahil kulang sa pondo. Pero ngayon, ang sasabihin ko po'y pag inihabol natin 'yan, ay sumakay tayo sa iligal. Maganda man ang hangarin, subalit kung iligal ang pamamaraan, iligal pa rin. At hindi po pwedeng gamitin pamantayan ng sistema ng isang demokrasya. Ang DBN nagsasamit ang pondo rito, tayo, hinihimay-himay natin 'yan. Pagkatapos may period of amendment, diyan tayo nagpapasok ng amyenda. Eh binadaliin nyo eh para masasabing tilapos natin ang pondo in record time. Ngayon sasabihin nyo may kulang dun sa pondo. Makukwestion po 'yan. Kumbibigyan ninyo ang DOH, bigyan din po ninyo 'yung Department of Education, bigyan din po nyo 'yung Department of Housing. Wala pong pondo yun at marami pang iba. Yun ang aking unang tanong. Pangalawaan tanong ko po'y, ang problema ba'y pera, pondo, o ibang bagay?
Madam Chair, ay Madam Speaker, walang isa pong nakikita ng DOH talaga na pinakamalaking problema ay 'yung pagbaba ng level of confidence sa vaccination program ng ating bansa. Yun po ang number one na tinuturo nila na sanhi. Nito at pangalawa po 'yung poor sanitation and hygiene natin dito pa rin sa ating Pilipinas dahil meron pa rin po tayong 7% na nag-o-openly defecate sa public, sa ating kong bansa. So exposed po tayo sa mga diseases dahil po dito.
Alam po ninyo, anim ang anak ko. Lahat sila dumaan sa bakuna. Lahat sila binigyan ng DPT, binigyan sila ng anti, anti every disease imaginable sa public health center. Public health center. Hindi po ko nagdadala ng mga anak ko sa mga mahaleng hospital. 'Yung mga public health center, dun po kami nagpapabakuna. At lahat po naman sila ay nabakunahan ng tama. At ipinipilit naming sila'y bakunahan. Sa ngayon, ang problema ninyo, dinadala ngayon dito sa ating Kongreso, ay 66% ng mga magulang ay hindi na nagdadala ng kanilang mga anak sa health center.
66 po ang nagdadala?
Ah, 66 ang nagdadala. Eh bakit sa napunta 'yung 34%?
Yun po ang hinahanap natin na problema at sinasabi nga ng DOH ay dahil sa vaccine confidence, medyo bumaksak po ang vaccine confidence.
Madam Speaker, the lady mentioned the problem, vaccine confidence or lack of it. Wala na pong tiwala ang ating mga mamamayan o nagkukulang ng tiwala sapagat 'yung bakuna ay hindi na maasahan sa kanilang damdamin, pananaw, at sentido common. Naalala po ba ninyo 'yung Dengvaxia scandal? 'Yung po'y nung isang administration lang po yun. Hindi po pera ang naging problema 'ron. Sobra-sobra ang kanilang hinugol. Kung di ako nagkakamali, eh mga apat na billion, di po ba? Mga ganon. Around 3 to 4 billion. So the money was not the problem. The problem was the misapplication of the vaccine. Our children were exposed to Dengue and I am making an educated analysis. Marami sa mga biktima ng Dengue ngayon nabakunahan ng Dengvaxia. Ang tanong ko po'y, may nanagot na po ba dun sa malaking abusong ginawang yun? Na ang mga bata ay walang kamalay-malay, dinalan ang mga magulang nila upang bakunahan ng anti Dengue vaccine dahil na lumalabas ngayon, hindi po pala anti Dengue. Eh nakailangan, nagkadenge ka na para ikaw ay numakas ang iyong resistance sa Dengue muli. 'Yung hindi pa nagkakadenge, nabigyan ng Dengue vac germs or microbes or whatever na naexpose sila ngayon sa Dengue. Sino po ba na kulang dun? Taong bayan? Mga doktors sa health center? O ang Gobyerno Department of Health in particular?
Madam Speaker, alam ko po ay kasalukuyan, nireresolba pa rin ang kaso or investigasyon tungkol dito. Kaya po ang isa lang po naming pinagbibigyan ng D N at pansin sa akin kong privileged speech with regards to polio, ang kaibahan ng polio vaccine sa Dengvaxia vaccine. Dahil ito pong polio vaccine natin, 40 years na po natin inaapply dito po sa ating bansang Pilipinas. 6.20 million Filipinos na po ang naligtas po natin for the past several 40 years because of this polio vaccine. Kaya gusto ko lang itawid sa ating mga magulang 'yung depresya ng kaligtasan ng polio vaccine at nung Dengvaxia vaccine. Pagdating po dun sa investigasyon ng Dengvaxia, alam ko po ongoing po ito at wala po akong authority para sagutin po ang inyong katanungan kung ano na po ang status. Pero maaari ko pong alamin para masagot ko po ang katanungan nyo sa susunod na mga panahon po.
Madam Speaker, hindi pwede pong at this point in time sabihin natin na wala ng tiwala ang tao. In the same breath, sabihin natin wala pang guilty na nadidiklar. Eh hindi maniniwala ang tao sa atin. Ang sabihin ng tao ay hindi ka po na pababakunan ng anak ko. Sapagat baka lalagyan nyo ng anti polo vaccine, eh ma-expose sa polio 'yan, katulad ng nangyayari sa Dengue. So therefore, the gentle lady would be more effective if in your message today, you include my message, and that is for the Department of Health never to be used again for any consideration, for monetary considerations personally, by any administration, by any president, by any secretary of health. Wag na sila magpagamit muli dahil meron mga hinabang, pero 'yung mga bata na sakripisyo ay 'yung polio vaccine. Marami po ako nakakausap sa mga barangay. Sabi ng mga magulang, eh hindi totoo 'yan eh. Narinig ko 'yung isang meeting ng mga magulang, yun ang sinabi, wag kayong maniniwala sa baku-bakuna. Hindi lang unang pagkakataon 'yan. May binanggit 'yung isa. Alam ko naman kung ano yun. Naalala ba nyo 'yung anti tetanus vaccine? Siguro naalala nyo yun, kay aktibo na sa civic work ng mga panahong yun, mga 1995. Binakunahan ang mga kababaihan na merong labing apat, apat-tapot taong, apat-tapot apat na taon gulang. Ang sabi ng Department of Health, yun daw ay para ang mga babae ay maligtas sa tetanus. Kaya ang bakuna nila, anti tetanus. Ang ginamit nila ay vaccine na nung sinuri namin ay hindi na mapalapang anti tetanus, anti pregnancy. Pina-check po namin sa UST laboratory, pina-check namin sa Machapi Med laboratory. Nakita namin, out of 100 vials, 20 vials contained the element of human chorionic gonadotrophin. Ang ibig sabihin nun, mababa ug 'yung babakunahan. 20%. 'Yung napakalaking issue yun ay ang may pakunan naman ay 'yung nasirang secretary na napakapupular ng mga panahong yun, Secretary Flavier. Na nung hinarap namin siya, walang masabi. Naggalit-galitan, nanakot. Eh hindi po ko natatakot sa pananakot eh. Eh sinagot ko siya ng tuwiran, bakit mo binaba ug ang mga kababaihan? Hindi mo makua sa pangungumbisi, babakunahan mo na lamang ng lason. Kaya, doon nag umpisa ang unti-unti pagkawalan ng tiwala. Dahil nabisto sila na binaba ug nila ang mga kababaihang Pilipina. 'Yung mga nagpabakuna sa inyo nung anti tetanus, wag na kayong magtataka. 20% to sa inyo, hindi na magbubuntis. That is one of the most insidious, destructive, treachery committed on the Filipino people. The Department of Health, in particular at the time, initiated that kind of a program on our women. I know many women today who cannot bear children, and I can only explain to them why. Nagpabakuna ba kayo? Opo. Hindi na kayo magbubuntis, tinawaan kayo nung 20% na bakunang ang porpos baugin kayo. Sumunod ang Dengvaxia sa pilitan ang mga bata dinadala sa health center. Bakunahan upang hindi na magkaroon ng Dengue. Ngayon lumalabas. 'Yung bakuna ay makapagbibigay ng Dengue kung hindi pa nagkakadenge 'yung bata. Again, ano ang anggulo ng Department of Health? Salapi! Kaya humihingi kayo ng karagdagan salapi para ano? Pagkakitaan na na manila? This representation will stand up and defend the truth and the right of every Filipino. On the matter of vaccination, the Department of Health must first cleanse itself, make some public admission. Sabihin nila, iba na ang Department of Health ngayon. Hindi naman luloko ito kailan man. Hindi natatanggap ng pera ito kanino pa man. At kami mas malinis na kaysa sa mga nakaraan. So that we can also translate the same to our people who are doubting the integrity of those running the Department of Health. You can trust Secretary Duque now, because Secretary Duque will not be part of any effort para magkambalang ng salapi ay babaugin kayo. O kaya 'yung mga anak ninyo ay magkakapolio. That is the challenge. You, as the principal source of this particular information critical today, I will join you in any effort to explain to the people, this is a different Department of Health. This does not belong to the vaccination of our women to sterilize them. This is a different Department of Health that exposed your children to Dengue just so they can make money just before the elections of 2016. Yung po antuna na problema, and if you decide to solve and address the problem in Kasten City, anywhere in the Philippines, I will join you. Because I know the people's state must be restored. Otherwise, we might as well stop, close the Department of Health. Sapagat hindi na naniniwala ang mga tao sa kanila. Yun na lang talagang gipit na gipit sa patalim. Ay gipit na gipit sa kalagayan, pumakapit sa patalim. Sapagat wala silang paraan kundi umasa sa doktor ng health center ng ating bansa. Otherwise, your appeal will come to nothing. Asking for more money without clarifying that issue, money will only go to graft and corruption, not to the solution of health problems of our people. But at least I congratulate you because you brought out the problem and I thank you for allowing me to speak for you and against you on this matter. Salamat po, Madam Speaker. And we hope for the best. And let's pray for our country.
Madam Speaker, nagpapasalamat po ako kay Representative Atienza sa kanyang mga advice. Rest assured that we will take to heart all the advice and the stories and the situations that he has identified during his interpolation. And kaya ito po ay panawagan ko sa lahat, malaki po ang trabaho natin especially in educating our mothers, the parents, in our respective barangays to restore vaccine confidence in the country. So that is duly noted, Representative Atienza, through you, Madam Secretary, Madam Speaker. Kaya sa atin po mga kapwa-mababata, seresohin po natin ang pageducate sa ating mga kapwa-magulang at ibalik ang confidence sa ating vaccine programs sa ating bansa. Marami pong salamat, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Herrera, Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from PBA Partilis, the Honorable Jerry Corozales, for his interpolation.
Representative Jerry Corozales. Nozales is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Your Honor, my distinguished colleague from the Bagong Generasyon Partilis, will you yield for a few questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, your honor. I heard from the speech, the privileged speech of the distinguished lady from BH Partilis that we are supporting vaccination by amount of 250 million pesos. Did I hear correctly, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Madam Speaker. It was mentioned by Appropriations Chair Sid Ungab that we will try to add 250 million for our polio vaccine program.
May I ask, Madam Speaker, your honor, if this will be in the form of oral polio vaccine, 'yung mga patak?
It will be in the form of oral polio vaccine.
Madam Speaker, your honor, the reason why I ask this is because as of this moment, the Department of Health does not have a solution to the polio crisis that we have right now. In fact, Madam Speaker, your honor, the polio virus that resurged in our country is called Vaccine-Derived Polio Virus Type 2. As of 2016, the Philippines has only been administering oral polio vaccine for type 1 and type 3. With that, Madam Speaker, your honor, with the continuity or a massive campaign of oral polio vaccine, how will that help stop type 2?
Madam Speaker, padating po ang vaccines natin to address this one. Kaya iba po ang mga nasa health centers natin right now. Kaya na-move to October 14 to 25 because we are awaiting for the vaccines to arrive so we can start with a massive polio vaccine starting October 14 to 25 and then another dose on November and then another dose either December or January.
Madam Speaker, your honor, the oral polio vaccine for type 2 is not available worldwide. The only way for the oral polio vaccine type 2 to reach our country is by a direct order of the Secretary General of the United Nations to release the global stockpile of the oral polio vaccine type 2 which is held by the World Health Organization and the UNICEF. So, Madam Speaker, your honor, are we sure that we are purchasing the correct vaccine?
Yes, as per DOH, we are, and we are purchasing it from UNICEF.
Because that is exactly what we need, your honor, Madam Speaker. Because since 2016, no country has had the trivalent vaccine. It's always type 1 and type 3. And you mean, Madam Speaker, your honor, we will now have type 2 in the Philippines? Is that an assurance, Madam Speaker, your honor?
That is what the Department of Health has relayed to us. Then if you are bringing this up, then we would verify further to ensure. But as of the last discussion with them, this was being ordered in UNICEF and then we are awaiting for its arrival, so we will know for sure. We will verify to address the query of our good congressman from PBA Partilis. Thank you for bringing it up, Madam Speaker, so that we can ensure that we are using the right vaccine in the polio drive for this coming month.
Then, Madam Speaker, your honor, I have full support with the measure or whatever action that the honorable lady from BH Partilis will have with regards to this matter. Thank you, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentle lady from the First District of Biloilo, the Honorable Representative Janet Garin for her interpolation.
Representative Janet Garin of the First District of Biloilo is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, distinguished colleague. I actually didn't have any intention to interpolate, as I admit, I was in another meeting and did not hear fully the and did not hear fully the privileged speech of the Honorable BH Bernadette Herrera. However, when I came in sensing the interpolation of one of our colleagues, which I believe would add on to the misinformation with regards to vaccination, may I be allowed, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, to forward some questions? There was mention of sterilization and vaccination during the interpolation of one of our colleagues. And I was of the impression that the distinguished sponsor, or the distinguished colleague who was delivering her privileged speech was affirming said information. Can you further expound how sterilization and vaccination are related?
Madam Speaker, I never agreed to the statement. I just said I thank the good interpreter for the information that he gave us, but that wasn't part of my privileged speech. He just mentioned that the anti-tetanus vaccine that was given during 1995. And then I didn't know anything about that until he brought it up. And I did not affirm anything as I have no authority and no knowledge of such.
Thank you for that, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. The reason why I ask this is this is precisely the reason why vaccination is going down the drain. We have people who are in possession and who continue the misinformation. First, there was the allegation that vaccination was related to sterilization. Again, fake news, Mr. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. Pangalawa po ang sabi niya, nagkaroon ng mga pagbabakuna dahil humihingi lang po ng pera sa gobyerno para sa graft and corruption. Again, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague. In this era where we have irresponsible officials who are talking about wrong information, this will again contribute not only to polio outbreak, but even more. Is our honorable colleague here, Madam Speaker, aware of that story on sterilization and tetanus toxoid?
No, Madam Speaker. I just heard it from the interpolator.
Yes. Because my appeal, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, is that when this information angbiro po pounded and you are, of course, the one delivering the privileged speech, is if it's wrong, then we should outrightly say it's not true. If we don't have any knowledge to this, then we should say we should refer to what is written on scientific base, scientific books. Ang kwento po ng sterilization at tetanus toxoid ay naging malaking sampal sa Pilipinas nung taon na sinabi niyo. What happened, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, was that a court overruled the tetanus toxoid, two doses being given to pregnant women. Nagkaroon na po ako ng maraming mga nanay na pinaanak at napakataas po ng risk ng neonatal tetanus, not only for the mother, but also for the child. And that is the reason why there are two tetanus toxoid doses required for every pregnant woman. And we are happy to say that we have overcome that fake news that happened wherein a court banned tetanus toxoid, a vaccination for pregnant women, which are actually two booster doses. Ano po ang nangyari, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague? Nung ito ay nangyari, alam niyo po ba ang naging consequence nung ginabas ng korte ang desisyon na 'yan?
Madam Speaker, I'm sure the good interpolator would enlighten us and she has more authority to talk about a topic that is not my topic of my privileged speech.
Madam Speaker, for a nil incident na halos walang nanay na namatay dahil sa tetanus nung panahon na yoon, nung yumpung lumaban, ginawan ng mali, ginawan ng kwentong kutsiero at hakahaka at naniwala naman ang korte, pinagbawal ang tetanus toxoid. Tingnan po natin ang dokumento. History will speak for itself. Many mothers died of tetanus. And because of this, after four or five years, when Filipino mothers were dying of tetany, ang nangyari po, ibinalik ang tetanus toxoid to save the mothers and the children. Again, irresponsible mga salita sa mga hindi experto, irresponsible mga salita sa tunay na pakain ng bakuna, kaya namamatay 'yung ating mga kababayan. And I would appeal, Madam Speaker, to our distinguished colleague. If vaccination is really in your heart, you should be one with the real experts and us vaccinators that should counter wrong information like what was forwarded earlier.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Kaya nga po doon sa statement ko, bilang kasagutan ko doon sa interpolator, kaya sinabi ko po, mas malaki ang challenge sa atin bilang mambabatas na i-educate at ibalik ang confidence sa vaccination program ng ating bansa. At 'yun po ang kinukumpere ko po 'yung polio vaccine that we have been doing for the past 40 years in the country and have saved millions of lives in our country. Kaya 'yun nga po 'yung nililinaw ko na bilang mambabatas, responsibilidad po natin na i-educate sila para hindi makinig sa maling impormasyon. Ako po ay sumasangayon sa inyo na kailangan bilang mambabatas, we will be responsible enough to give the correct information to the public and dispel any wrong information. At ako ay nagpapasalamat sa ating interpolator for explaining that situation para lahat po ng mambabatas dito ay masagot ma marinig ang kasagutan with regards to the issue that was raised by the first interpolator.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, sapagkakaalam ko po, ikaw rin po ay isang nanay. Did you ever have tetanus toxoid shots during your pregnancy?
Sapagkakaalam ko po, opo.
And Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, lahat po yata ng kongresista ditong nabuntis na ay nagkaroon ng dalawang tetanus toxoid shots. We were privileged na wala po tayo at hindi po tayo buntis nung panahon na ipnagbawal ng korte ang tetanus toxoid dito sa Pilipinas. Kaya ito ang naging rason na kung dati-rati eh wala ng neonatal tetanus, biglang nagsurge again because of fake news. Moving forward, Honorable Speaker, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I heard another colleague asking that since in 2016, what was given as the oral polio virus was actually a bivalent OPV. Ibig po sabihin 'yung oral polio na binibigay, tatlong patak pa rin, but it was actually protecting against polio 1 and polio 3. Na wala po ang polio 2. With our distinguished colleague and the honorable representative from the BH Partilis, the Bagong Generasyon Partilis, educate this august body what prompted our government to do such a thing and what prompted the world to follow that pursuit and directive by the World Health Organization?
Hindi ko po nakuha 'yung katanungan niyo. 'Yung ano po ang, what prompted the world to do the massive polio vaccination program?
No, Madam Speaker. Kanina po, tinanong po kayo ng ating kasamahan na nung dumating ang 2016, actually, it was not in 2016. It was in 2015, where there was a shift from the trivalent OPV to the bivalent oral polio vaccine. May our distinguished colleague enlighten this august body as to the reason for such?
Madam Speaker, I have no knowledge as to the reason for the shift, but all I know is that for this sa bayang patak, they would like to address the present strain that we have in the country today. That's why they ordered new sets of medicines, I believe, from UNICEF in order to achieve and address the present strain that is in the country today.
What was the medicine ordered from UNICEF, Madam?
I am not exactly sure of that one, but it's DOH who said that it would address the oral polio vaccine type 2 that we have here in the country.
Madam Speaker, with due courtesy to our distinguished colleague, I really do not want to stand up on this matter, but I feel it is my responsibility so that everybody will be on the same pipeline. Kasi pag narinig po natin ang komentong "may bakunang ibinigay" at dalawa lang ang laman, kulang ng isa, ang iisipin natin, binigyan natin ang kulang 'yung ating kababayan, kaya nagkaroon ng outbreak. Am I right in saying that that will be the interpretation? Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague?
Madam Speaker, it is said that they have to accept, receive three vaccines, three doses of vaccines for the three consecutive months.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, if you will allow me for a few minutes to educate our colleagues. Magkaiba po ang doses, magkaiba po ang strain. Ang polio virus po ay tatlong klase, polio 1, polio 2, at polio 3. 'Yung doses naman ng pagbabakuna kontra polio ay three doses. One and a half months old, two and a half months old, and three and a half months old. Wala pong kinalaman ang strain at ang dose na 1, 2, 3. Nagkasabay lang po, nagkataon lang po na pareho silang tatlo. Ang nangyari po sa buong mundo, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, of course, with due indulgence, ang sakit na polio ay nanggaling sa tatlong klasing virus. Sa buong mundo, karamihan ang ginagamit ay ang tinatawag na inactivated polio vaccine. Ito po ay turok at hindi patak. The only reason that the Philippines use the oral polio vaccine ay dahil mas mura. However, there is a possibility na itong virus pagka-oral polio, pagka-patak, eh pumapasok siya sa GIT or gastrointestinal tract ng pasyente. At may posibilidad na kung mababa ang resistensya ng batang na bakunahan, he or she will pass out the virus in his feces. Again, that is not an infection. Because if you were vaccinated with polio virus at nagpositibo ang dumi ng pasyente, hindi ibig sabihin na may sakit na na polio ang pasyente. And I believe that is the case in Laguna. So you can never say that that patient is positive for polio because the patient is not manifesting acute flaccid paralysis or the symptoms of a polio patient. Kaya nagkakaroon din ngayon ng mali na pag-iintindi. However, in 2014 and in 2015, the Philippines abided by the World Health Organization and decided to shift. Galing sa patak, ginawa nating turok. Bakit po? Dahil 'yung turok, ang iyong proteksyon ay buong katawan. It is a systemic protection. However, you cannot just do a shift in one click of your finger. It should be in a transition of three to five years. Kaya naging tatlong patak, isang turok. And then later on, magiging dalawang patak, dalawang turok. Up to you shift to a full tatlong turok, it is still the same polio dose 1, 2, 3, pero turok na siya. Hindi po totoo na kinulang ng isang dose. What was actually done is that worldwide, we were able to eradicate, the world was able to eradicate polio type 2. This is not the second dose. So the whole world decided to destroy all polio type 2, including the polio type 2 in the oral polio vaccine. Bakit po? Dahil ito po ang pwedeng pagsimulan ng pagbabalik. Unfortunately, the Philippines has found the presence of polio 2. It's not wild polio virus. It's vaccine-derived, meaning 'yung batang na bakunahan, dati, nung humina ang resistensya niya, eh lumabas sa kanyang dumi. What is the consequence of this? The consequence of this, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, distinguished colleague, kung 'yung palibot na tao sa Pilipinas, mababa ang vaccination coverage at kung 'yung duminang baby na nasa diaper, itinatapon kung saan-saan at hindi sila nagpupu po sa banyo na may proper disposal of waste, those people, pagka-bumaba ka ng 80% ay pwedeng magkapolyo dahil fecal to oral root. Nakahawak ka ng pupo na pakain mo si baby o napakain mo ang ibang pasyente. That is not related to the number of doses. The bivalent polio vaccine, as what Honorable Nograles was referring to, is in fact aligned with the World Health Directive dahil pwedeng pagkunan siya. Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, naririnig po kasi natin palagi ang vaccine-associated paralytic polyomyelitis and vaccine-derived paralytic polyomyelitis. May I inquire from the distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, what is your knowledge? O ano po 'yung iyong pag-iintindi sa VDPP at sa VAPP?
Palagay ko po, Madam Speaker, mas kayang i-explain ng ating interpolator bilang isang doktor. Baka ako po ay magkamali pa. Mas gusto kong siya na lang po ang mag-explain sa atin.
Now, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the reason why I was trying to open this up, dahil nuumpung ako ay nasa departamento pa, before my assumption, type 2 VDPP was also isolated in one of the sewage. Pero wala sa tao. At hindi po ito'y pinalapas dahil nga magkaroon na naman ng maling interpretasyon dahil ang pangalan mismo nakakatakot. Ang pangalan kasi vaccine-associated, vaccine-derived. We never use that term outside the medical confines kasi kaming mga vaccineologists alam namin at naintindihan namin. Pero pag ginagamit natin 'yung mga words na yoon sa labas ng scientific conference room at sa labas ng laboratoryo, pwedeng pagsimulan ng maling pagintindi. Kaya nga po, nung ito'y lumabas sa press release ng Department of Health, ako'y agad-agad na tumawag. Please don't use medical and scientific words because that will be misinterpreted by laymen. Tama po 'yun. Nanggagaling po siya sa bakuna, nanggagaling siya as vaccine-associated, dalawang klase po 'yun, or vaccine-derived, pero hindi po ibig sabihin na dapat katakutan ang bakuna. Ito ay nanggagaling doon pag lumalabas sa pupo at inuwaited or ni-knockout 'yung virus. Subalit, kung ikaw ay oral polio ang gamit at hindi injectable, kung bumaba ang immunization coverage sa buong bansa, pwede siyang magising. 'Yun po ang ibig sabihin nito. And if we have a low coverage of immunization, the solution there is to increase the coverage. The type 2 oral polio virus is already, is not being sold in the market anymore. 'Yung type 2 polio vaccine has been phased out of the world. All countries have shifted to bivalent oral polio vaccine. Saan po 'yan nakatago? 'Yan po ay tinatago ng World Health Organization. Yan po eh tinatago ng World Health Organization. Bakit po? Kasi kung sakali na magkaroon ng outbreak, kagaya na nangyari sa Pakistan, sa Pilipinas, at sa Syria. May gera sa Syria, may fake news sa Pilipinas, may vaccine as it's oral para proteksyonan dito muna ngayon. So my appeal, madam speaker, distinguished sponsor, is that we avoid using the terminologies V A P P and V D P P para po hindi lalong matakot yung ating mga nanay at tatay. And with due courtesy, of course, to my two colleagues, ang pakiusap ko po is huwag po natin gamitin ang termino na kulang yung bakunang ginamit ng Department of Health. Because doses is different from polio virus strains and the doses given were actually the perfect doses being given before and until now aligned with the World Health Organization Directive by the Strategic Advisory Group on Experts. Ang ibig lang po natin sabihin, madam speaker, distinguished sponsor, I know that this is very technical. But if you want to laymanize it, ang babalikan lang po natin, huwag po natin paratanga ng kung ano-anong akusasyon ang pagbabakuna. I took offense from a senator who said, "Baka naman yung outbreak gawa-gawa lang para magpera ang multinationals." Madam speaker, distinguished sponsor, vaccines are regulated worldwide. Pagka may outbreak, binibigay siya ng libre. That's why the fund that the distinguished sponsor is requesting should just be used for human resource. And madam speaker, distinguished sponsor, marami pa pong pera ang Department of Health sa ngayon kasi ang dami po ng hindi nagastos. They also have the quick response fund to answer to calamities. At kung yaan enandyan, if you have the will, you will find the way. I believe the problem is not just asking for volunteers because Rotary has been very active. The Latter Church, the Church of the Latter Saints has also been very active. In fact, they even donate and spend. What is the missing link, madam speaker? The missing link are the experts that the Department of Health should immediately tap. Kasi kung puro lang po tayo dal-dal, pero hindi po natin kinakausap ang mga totoong experto. Kung puro lang po tayo press conferences, pero hindi natin sinasabi ang totoo, para ano pa? Because those words can never make the life of a dead child alive again. Maraming salamat po, madam speaker. Maraming salamat, distinguished sponsor.
Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Maraming salamat po sa ating interpreter.
I just would like to manifest.
Point of order, madam speaker.
One simple message.
I move that we call the roll.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend.
One simple message.
Point of order, madam speaker.
I challenge the debate.
Point of order, madam speaker.
So that she will go to jail.
Annual inquiry, madam speaker. The one who delivered the speech is the honorable BH, hindi po si Honorable Lachenza. Thank you, madam speaker.
Hang on, nang tension. Hang on, nang tension.
Go, go.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Speaker.
Roll call.
Session resumed, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Janet Garin from the First District of Iloilo.
Honorable Janet Garin is recognized.
Madam Speaker, sensing that there are other equally important meetings and we have other members of the House who would wish to deliver a privileged speech, I withdraw my motion to call the roll.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege R. So move, madam speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is not, the privilege R is suspended. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guest of our Majority Leader, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes. May we respectfully recognize the parliamentary delegation from Australia headed by Honorable Trevor Evans and Honorable John Kraus. I so move, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker.
The guest of Majority Leader Ramaldes is recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guest of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Michael Romero and the Honorable Congresswoman from the Second District of Laguna, Ruth Hernandez. May we recognize the visitors from Laguna State Polytechnic University, Dr. Mario Briones, Dr. Chester Alexis Boma, Dr. Erika Tabuak, Professor Nora Matusalem, Professor Sherwin Sapien, Professor Christina Malabayabas, Dr. Sherwin Sapien, Professor Narcisa Pas, Professor Margarita Galang, and Dr. Sally Tumambing. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The guests of DS Mike Romero and Hernandez, please stand up. You are welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I also move to recognize the guest of the Honorable Sarah Jane Ilago of Partilis Kabataan. They are Darrell Baibado, Connie Empeño, Jayi Ilau, Eden Gutierrez, Abitan, Cricsha Aboy, Shira Escudero, and Jules Hyang, Celeste Rondario, Camille Lim, Brian Tenorio, Ariana Salazar, Dexter Galban, Anton Nemenso, Villa Rederos, Ereci Antonio, Sara Fabito, Clyde Palatao, Jefferson Estela, and Ryan Patrick Bello. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The guest of Representative Sarah Ilago, please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I so move that we recognize the guest of Honorable Majority Leader Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes. They are members of the United Architects of the Philippines, namely Konrado Kison, Randel Leona, Ryan Moreno, Jason Hamias, Ray Guanes, Poselito Francisco, Felizardo Cipriano, and Justin Francisco. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The guest of Majority Leader Martin Ramaldes, please stand up. You're welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize, correction, Madam Speaker, those are the guests of Anthony Peter Oyings, Chorazologo, not the Majority Leader.
Guest, they are the guest, please stand up, the guest of Anthony Chorazologo. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Lastly, may we recognize the guest of, I move that we recognize the guest of Honorable Rudy Kawagdan, Representative Second District, North Cotobato. They are the Badangai Chairman Paul Makaso, Mr. Eduardo Umpan, Julie Kapunong, Naryo Andip, Arlene Kabakungan, Jimmy Mantawil, Sedeno Alilian, Kistuto Surigumba, Noli Barete, Ricardo Reforial, Alberta Canonoy, Raul Paruhinob, Baltasar Dampinanan, and Julio Lambinghisa, Chema Pahes, Morgan Madellos, Jeffrey Baloro, Noel Karumbaw, Bernabeanyo, Pipito Eremendeo, Christina Padaya, John Dolin Islam, Jabert Gordista, Arnold Sumbiling, Junisio Juanal, Sumplicio Calvo, Roger Toledo, Sacarias Le La Cruz, Eduardo Loma, Albert Espina, John Carl Sibob, Michael Sagusay, Gallen Ray Lonsaga, Cyril Evangelista, Aida Garcia, Joseph Evangelista, Marites Malaluan, Carlo Agamon, Andrew Chris Jason, and Larry Tainan. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The guest of Representative Gordon, please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend the session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session suspended.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, the next to avail of the privilege hour is the lady from the 2nd District of Taguig. I move that we recognize the Honorable Maria Laarni Cayatano. So move, Mr. Speaker.
We recognize, and I recognize her every day, the representative of the 2nd District of Taguig.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Fellow members of the House of Representatives, our friends from the Secretariat, guests, ladies and gentlemen, it is my privilege this afternoon to honor the unsung heroes of this august chamber. Ang tinutukoy ko po, Mr. Speaker, ay ang mga kawanin ng Camera de Representantes na simula ngayong araw hanggang buong buwan ng oktubre ay magdiriwang ng House of Representatives Month. My dear colleagues, we rely heavily on the support of the Secretariat and all the employees and staff who endeavor day to day to effectively and efficiently provide the necessary services to the House of Representatives. However, with our numerous responsibilities, we sometimes overlook their importance and contributions. Alam ko ang sasangayon kayong lahat, mga kasamahan ko sa kongreso, kung sasabihin ko na hindi matatawaran ang kanilang serbisyo sa ating bayan. Mula sa pagpasok natin sa bakuran ng Camera de Representantes, pagpanik sa ating mga opisina, pagkasagawa ng mga sesyon at committee hearings, pag-aasikaso ng ating pagkain, pagpo-proseso ng mga batas na ating isinusulong, pangangalaga sa kalinisan, kaayusan, at ating seguridad, hanggang sa pagpapatakbo ng ating mga tanggapan sa ating mga distrito, sa mga kawanin tayos umasaling. For the very first time, Mr. Speaker, today, we shift the spotlight to our workforce. For without them, we will not be able to fulfill our missions to the districts that we represent. I believe that it is about time that we get to know them better and in the process, learn about their diverse needs at work and in life. By giving them the opportunity to tell their own stories, we, their elected leaders, are equally given the chance to appreciate them more. The insights to be gained will equip us in crafting an enhanced and responsive work-life balance program that will enable them to live well and work well. This, Mr. Speaker, is the reason behind the HREP Month to address the well-being of the entire Secretariat family and the congressional staff as they continue to serve with passion and commitment in tandem with us, the House members. So to give us a little better understanding of this initiative, let us hear the stories directly from them. Let us watch the ADP.
The employees are the backbone of the House of Representatives. No law is passed without the employees doing the research, drafting the bill, writing the committee report, recording the proceedings, and transcribing the records and journals. Members of the House of Representatives are able to do their work because there are employees who maintain and secure the premises, who serve them food and bring their papers, who arrange their travels and interviews, and who process their salaries and give them legal advice.
I've been with Congress for more than 30 years.
Forty-one years po.
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-three years na po.
Almost fifteen years na po.
Thirty-seven years.
On October 6th, will mark my 32nd year of service in the House of Representatives.
The employees and support staff are the wings beneath our wings. They made our lives easy and also the lives of the House members.
We do a lot of errands for the House members. That's basically what we do. Ano ba ang purpose ng House of Rep? To make laws, correct? So kami, in a way, we're contributing to that purpose. Kasi kami 'yung nagbibigay ng mga papeles or mga documents na whatever they need inside the session.
Ang tungkulin ko po ay bilang isang driver. Isa akong ama sa loob ng isang pamilya. Dahil una sa trabaho ko at pagmaneho ko, lahat na lang nakasakay doon sa gagamitin ko si shuttle bus. Lahat 'yan, bawat galaw ko ay kinakailangan. Sigurado ako.
Nandito po kami, iproprotect po 'yung mga ating boss para masikir po 'yung pagpasok at paglabas nila po. Dapat parang lang po tayo nasa bahay na komportable. Wala nang iniisip, kundi imporpos natin dito sa work.
If there is no commitment to one's calling and there is no perseverance along the way through thick and thin, then I would have not fulfilled what God called me to be.
Si pag matiyaga ako sa trabaho, pakikisama rin ng mga lihat.
Working at the House of Representatives, it's a privilege for me. Kasi hindi marami ang muslim na empleyado dito, especially sa Secretariat. I dream of retiring here. So sana, makaka-retire ako dito. Makaka-retire ako dito. Um... Kasi hindi naman kami pinapabayaan dito eh, sa House of Rep. Kung iisipin mo bilang isang empleyado, yun lang naman ang habol mo eh, 'yung inahanap mo na you are taken care of.
Lahat ng mga officialis dito ay napapangalagaan kami.
You'll meet a lot of people, mentors, and friends. Kasi lahat ng tao dito mabubait po.
The House has given us the opportunities to live well and work well because of various activities that promote work-life balance. The institution has been very kind to us. The House puts premium to its people and personally, the compensation package provides well for my family.
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Kaya po sa puntong ito, kung palagi ho na tayo ay nakadepende sa mga kawanin ng Camera de Representantes, palagi po sila ang nakatingin sa atin, palagi po sila 'yung umaalalay sa atin. Ngayon, hinihiling ko po ang aking mga kasamahan sa kongreso. Tumayo po tayo at sa pagdiriwang ng HREP Month, tayo naman po ang pumalakpak sa kanila. Tayo naman po ang tumingin sa kanila. Tayo naman po ang sumaludo sa kanila. Maraming-maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Pagpalain po ng Panginoon ang buhay ng bawat kawanin ng Camera de Representantes.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Lani Cayatano to the committee on rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Dear colleagues, let us listen to the response of our honorable speaker.
Unless the Lord builds the house, the builder builds in vain. If you look at the Filipino... Philippine Constitution, nakalagay po doon the kind of society we want to build with the help of the Almighty. For the longest time, ang House of Representatives ay parating whipping boy. Kung may katrapuhan, kung may korupsyon, kung merong pong mapipintas or 'yung negative ng politika, parati na lang binabaling sa house. First of all, it's very unfair to our employees and officials who are working very hard. So thank you very much na tumayo kayo bilang mga representing elected para palakpakan ang mga taong na sa likod ng camera, pero sila talaga ang gumagawa ng trabaho. And of course, let us continue to honor them not only in words sa palakpak, but to make sure that their families are well provided for, to make sure that Congress has a complex where friends can gather, where they can have mabilis man but good meals and a good talk and break bread together. Let's make sure that we have sports facilities para pati naman 'yung katawan. Ah... So soul, spirit, body, mind, no? In saying all of this, I'd like to thank you because with the help of the Almighty, we are building the house. Each Congress has done great things. And siyempre po, 'yung intriga sa isa or 'yung kontrobersya sa isa, minsan nagiging kontrobersya nung lahat. But in the last days, last few months, napatunayan natin that we can try new things, that we can think out of the box, that wala sa constitution na kailangan mabagal ang legislation. Na wala sa constitution na hindi tayo pwede mag-usap kung paano mapabilis at maging mas effective ang governance. Wala rin po sa constitution na nakalagay na mga representante should not take care of their constituents and their employees. So we are doing all of this sa vision ng ating Pangulo to have a safe and comfortable life for all. I know apektado tayo minsan sa mga balita at news, pero I will give you the same advice that your parents, your lolo, your lola, my lolos and lolas told me. Number one, kung wala ka rin mabuting masasabi, huwag ka na lang magsalita. Number two, huwag papatol sa chismis. So to our friends in media and the people of the Philippines, pag merong kayong matutuligs sa 18th Congress, by all means, sabihin niyo. Through social media, through try media, through emails, WhatsApp, Viber, come here, private message niyo kami, Facebook, but show us your complaints. Pero kung general accusation lang and then ah, chismis, paano naman sasagutin ang chismis? Pag sinagot mo ang chismis, ng chismis din, pare-pareho na tayong chismoso. But more than that, do the people deserve an argument on pork when there is really no pork in the budget? Or do the people deserve a discussion on how much more money does our farmers need? Anong klaseng mga programa sa DA ang kailangan to make family-owned farms work? Sa health, may universal healthcare tayo, how do we fund it? May problema sa mga ilan disease na bumabalik, how do we solve it? Sa education, pinangakuhan tayo na 'yung K-12 pagka-nay lagay, hindi mo na kailangan mag-college, pwede na magkatrabaho. Pero kulang sa equipment, kulang sa expertise. These are the kind of debates that our people want. Yes, bad news sells, but bad news does not build a nation. Bad news, intriga, and chismis does not build the house. And we, the 18th Congress, are determined to build a house, a house of the people that will give our people a safer and more comfortable life. So by the powers vested in me, through my colleagues, I now declare the House of Representatives Month open.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Lauren Legarda, our Deputy Speaker, for her privilege hour.
Deputy Speaker Lauren Legarda is now recognized. Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I would like to read a brief quotation. "People are suffering, people are dying, entire ecosystems are collapsing. We are in the beginning of a mass extinction."
and all you can talk about is money and fairy tales of eternal economic growth. How dare you?" Unquote. As you all know, these are but few of the gripping words spoken by the 16-year-old Swedish climate activist Greta Thunberg, addressing the United Nations Climate Action Summit on Monday. Some may say that her words made them uncomfortable. It did, but only because she was speaking the truth. Colleagues, the science has been crystal clear for more than 30 years now, but leaders all over the world chose to look away. This resulted in the climate emergency that we all have to deal with now, and we no longer have the luxury of time. The latest climate science warned that we only have 12 years left before the window of opportunity for achieving the 1.5 degrees Celsius long-term temperature goal of the Paris Agreement before it closes. The 1.5 degrees goal is a global warming threshold that will enable vulnerable developing nations like ours to survive and thrive. Global warming beyond 1.5 will disrupt basic social and economic activities. It will transform life as we know it. This is why Greta and millions of students all over the world, including in our country, including here in the Philippines, are demanding true climate action from leaders like us. Responding to the climate emergency is a moral and intergenerational responsibility. It is our obligation to lead our nation to a more sustainable and climate resilient path. We need to ensure that climate action is embedded in the country's long-term development strategies. We also need to carry out immediate, risk-informed, and science-based adaptation interventions in the most climate-vulnerable communities. In 2018, Madam Speaker, I accepted the invitation to be a Commissioner of the Global Commission on Adaptation, which is a gathering of climate advocates and world leaders pushing to accelerate climate change adaptation. The GCA is jointly led by United Nations former Secretary-General Bank Y moon, philanthropist Bill Gates, and former World Bank CEO Kristalina Georgieva, who is now the IMF Managing Director and is co-managed by the Global Center on Adaptation and the World Resources Institute. The GCA aims to inspire heads of states, government officials, community leaders, business executives, investors, and other actors to prepare for and to respond, to adapt to the disruptive effects of climate change with urgency, with determination, and with foresight. Our call is "Adapt Our World." This is our mission, to tip the balance in favor of continued growth and more widely shared prosperity, even in a rapidly warming world. Adaptation means preparing for and responding to the disruptive effects of climate change. It means doing everything we can to protect people's lives and livelihoods from the impacts of a changing environment as well as creating and spreading solutions to make communities, our homes, businesses, farms, infrastructure stronger and better equipped to deal with increasing challenges. Together with Patricia Espinosa, Executive Secretary of the United Nations Framework on Climate Change, or the UNFCC, Cristiana Figueroa, former UNFCC Executive Secretary, and my fellow Commissioners, we launched the GCA flagship report, which we had developed over the last several months, last September 10. I have the distinct honor and privilege of sharing its findings before this August chamber. The GCA flagship report entitled "Adapt Now: A Global Call for Leadership on Climate Resilience" entailed careful study of data and good practices across many countries and reveals to us the cause of climate change on people and the global economy now and in the near future. Without adaptation, climate change may depress growth in global agriculture yields by up to 30% by 2050, affecting the 500 million small farms around the world the most. The number of people who may lack sufficient water at least one month per year will soar from 3.6 billion today to more than 5 billion by 2050. Rising seas and greater storm surge could force hundreds of millions of people in coastal cities from their homes, with a total cost to coastal urban areas of more than 1 trillion US dollars each year by 2050. And that climate change could push more than 100 million people within developing countries below the poverty line by 2030. Considering all these, the report provides three imperatives on why we should accelerate climate change adaptation. First, it is a human imperative because climate change exacerbates existing inequities by widening the gap between people with wealth and people living in poverty. It also has a disproportionate impact on women and girls, who in most parts of the world have little voice in decisions that affect their lives. Second, it is an environmental imperative because climate change is accelerating the loss of our natural assets. One in four species is facing extinction. About a quarter of all ice-free land is now subject to degradation and ocean temperatures and acidity are rising. The natural environment is humanity's first line of defense against floods, droughts, heat waves, and hurricanes. A thriving natural environment is fundamental to adaptation in every human enterprise. There is still time to protect and to work with nature to build resilience and to reduce climate risks at all scales. But the window is closing. Third, it is an economic imperative because adaptation is in our strong economic self-interest. The report found out that investing 1.8 trillion US dollars globally in five areas from 2020 to 2030 could generate 7.1 trillion US dollars in total net benefits. The five areas considered for this estimate are early warning systems, climate resilient infrastructure, improved dryland agriculture, crop production, global mangrove protection, investments in making water resources more resilient. In other words, failing to seize the economic benefits of climate adaptation with high-return investments would undermine trillions of dollars in potential growth and prosperity. The full report, which my office will gladly circulate, on soft copy of course, provides a more in-depth coverage of why and how we should accelerate adaptation. But the message of the report cannot be any clearer. We must seize the opportunity to adapt for the benefit of our people, environment, and the economy. Madam Speaker, adaptation is nothing new for us. Together with climate change mitigation, they have become buzzwords, having been said too many times, much too often, in too many occasions, for far too long. But translating these buzzwords into results to actually enable our leaders and citizens to initiate and sustain climate action remains a challenge. As you all know, I have been a strong advocate for environmental and climate action for many decades now, since my young years as a broadcast journalist in the 80s and during my three terms in the Philippine Senate. And I will certainly continue to do so as I de-charge my role as Deputy Speaker and Representative and willing to mentor any district congressman or party list representative in whichever way possible. I recall when I first ran as Senator in 1998, and many of our young congressmen present here today were probably not even born or children of their fathers, mothers, or grandparents, who were once congressmen in this hall. Many of you were governors, local government officials. I was warned by many, because I was a transitioning journalist, to run for a national office, that I could not win. They said I should be prepared to lose because climate change and the environment were my advocacy's in the 90s. If I continued to espouse my environmental agenda, I would lose. It did not happen. With the help of many of you, we emerged as number one then. In my reelection in 2007, where most, if not all of you helped as well, many thought I was out of my mind as I championed the climate change agenda. Some even said that my advocacy seemed trivial and out of place. But in both elections, thank you to most, if not all of you, I emerged victorious, not for myself, but for the shared advocacy's we all have. Winning the elections was just the start. I wanted to deliver on legislation that would respond to the people's needs for which they voted me into office. And so, Madam Speaker, just for the benefit of the first-term congressmen who are very young in this chamber, many of whom I've only met, I would like to just give a background on the landmark legislation on environment and climate change that we have done in the 18 years that this representation, your humble colleague, did in the Senate, so that in your respective districts and constituencies, you can help me monitor in our oversight function the implementation of these laws. The Clean Air Act 8749, Environmental Awareness Education Act 9512, the Ecological Solid Waste Management Law 9003, La Puyan sa aking unang termino 2001, Disaster Risk Reduction Management Act of 2010. Ang ama ni Congressman Biazon, ang siyang naging principal author at sponsor nito si Manong Pong. Si Joey Salceda, isang batikan, ang kasama ko rin sa Climate Change Act at isa sa tinaguri ang mga champion at experto sa adukasyang ito. 9729, the Climate Change Act and its amendatory law, creating the pioneering local climate finance mechanism called the People's Survival Fund. I also chaired three committees in the Senate, among others, the Committee on Foreign Relations, which facilitated the Senate concurrence on the President's ratification of the Paris Agreement. The Committee on Climate Change, of which we have a special committee here, which we sought the creation of in my second term. And the Committee on Finance, during which we endeavored to transform our national budget into a climate budget because, as DS Joey Salceda knows, the issue of climate change is not just one department, but it is a whole-of-nation and whole-of-society approach. So we did this by ensuring provisions on adaptation and mitigation as a way of supporting our goal to build climate resilience. One groundbreaking action that we also led in the Philippine Senate was to impose taxes on coal, which would have been comparable with the rates in our neighboring countries like Indonesia. For decades, coal importation had enjoyed minimal taxes at 10 pesos or 20 US centavos per metric ton. There was stiff opposition, but with your help, we were able to increase the taxes to 50, 100, and 150 pesos for the next three years. These tax rates are four times lower than what I had originally wanted, but to break that wall against dirty energy that could not be penetrated for the longest time was for us already a monumental feat. I mention all of these, Madam Speaker, because conveying what climate change is, is the easy part. Enabling them to take climate action is a most difficult path. But even doing the easier part is in itself already sometimes frustrating, especially when dealing with people who consider climate change only as a conceptual environmental issue without real-life impact on humanity and our planet. It was probably only during Typhoon Ondoy and Typhoon Yolanda, which our Majority Leader so much remembers and feels among his constituents, when it brought devastation to many communities, that people began to understand how big of a threat climate change is. Although it was much unfortunate that it took tremendous loss of lives, properties, and resources, there was a sudden urgency to put systems and policies in place to address those climate impact. We have learned a lot since then. We've integrated the climate change perspective into our development planning and our budgetary process, and have supported our own measures to combat its impact. But in light of the intensifying impact of this climate crisis, we are required to do much more. The Philippines, in its 2019 Global Climate Risk Index, by German Watch, ranks fifth among countries most affected by climate change from 1998 to 2017. Within these two decades, the country lost an annual average of 0.5% of its GDP due to climate change impact. Moreover, according to Pagasa, the observed temperature in the country is rising at an average of 0.1 degrees Celsius per decade and is projected to increase by as much as 0.9 degrees to 2.3 degrees Celsius by 2050, entailing drastic changes in weather patterns, increase in frequency, intensity, and duration of floods, and increase in frequency and intensity of droughts in the face of climate change. Major rainfall changes in patterns and distribution suggests a decrease in rainfall by 2020 in most parts of the country except Luzon, and an increase in the number of days with heavy rainfall by year 2020 and 2050. Sea level rise in the country is projected to be at 60 centimeters, or three times the global average of 19 centimeters, with about 60% of our local government units at risk of storm surge, flash floods, and saltwater intrusion. Just last month, our Department of Health issued a national epidemic alert on Dengue, following reports of 142,062 Dengue cases in the country within the first seven months of this year. This is a sharp increase by 98% compared to the same period of 2018. In Antike alone, the province registered 1,117 cases from January to July this year, compared to 494 cases for the same period last year, which is an alarming increase by 126%. It is considered that Dengue naturally thrives in tropical and subtropical climates, but various studies point out that climate change is linked to the surge of Dengue and potentially for the vector-borne diseases as rising temperatures may lead to longer transmission and stronger rainfall, and flooding may facilitate breeding. and stronger rainfall, and flooding may facilitate breeding, leading to a greater number of human infections. Despite this bleak scenario, I remain positive that the Philippines can continue to exercise leadership on adaptation and be regarded as a model of resilience. To date, we have six municipalities that have secured funding from the People's Survival Fund, which is our very own local climate finance mechanism for adaptation projects that support the establishment of climate field schools, ecological-based farming, climate resilient agriculture, watershed rehabilitation, bridge-to-reef adaptation, and river ecosystem management. And I hope that more LGUs can access these funds easier and more promptly. We fund it every year, Mr. President, 1 billion a year. Perhaps all congressmen can encourage their SUCs, their LGUs, to give proposals for the PSF, which the DOF vets and grants. There are a number of simple, easy-to-do, no-regrets, local adaptation initiatives that you, my esteemed colleagues in Congress, could promote and pursue in your respective districts and sectors to increase their adaptive capacities. Let me just share with you 10 of them, citing some areas where these have been successfully done. You would probably be surprised to find out that these are actually happening in your districts. Harvesting rainwater for household and community use in Ormok Leyte, Congresswoman Lucy Torres Gomez. Making rain gardens, food gardens, and edible landscapes for food sufficiency in Tagig. Speaker Kayatano knows this. His brother, who was barangay captain, was responsible for this. In fact, barangay fourth, along with the barangay in Malabon, in Potrero. Kong J. knows about this. Potrero used to be one of the dirtiest. Nahiya naman po ako na bilang autor ng 9003, ang kinatatayo ng ancestral home ng aking yumaong ina ay pinakamurumi. Tinuruan po namin house-to-house ang barangay at nanalo ng Green and Green ang barangay Potrero ng Malabon. Quezon City in Los Banios, UP Los Banios, Valledulid in Negroes Occidental. Inanlampayan sa mga may rain garden, sa may edible landscape, at may food garden. Constructing roadside ditches to mitigate floods. Ito po ay ginagawa sa iilang proyekto ng DPWH. Harnessing solar and other renewable energy to electrify homes, schools, barangay halls, and public places. Hindi lang ang giwan samar ang gumagamit nito. Marami ng LGUs ang gumagawa nito. Reducing waste to zero. Recycling and reusing and refusing single-use plastics in Camotes Island in Cebu. Simple lang po nagagawa ng mga remote na barangay sa mga isla. Planting bamboo. Isa pang advokasya ng marami sa atin kasama na si DS Didi Savelliano. To protect slopes, to prevent landslides, and to provide livelihood. In Lubaw-Pampanga, ginagawa po nila yan. Kayang-kayang gawin sa ibang mga distrito. Planting mangroves and seagrass beds to protect coastal ecosystems and communities in Bohol and in Sursegon. Madam Speaker, tanung niyo sa anak nyong gobernador, former Senator Escudero. Modelo po ang inyong probinsya. Promoting climate field schools and resilient livelihoods for farming and rural communities in Dumanggas, Iloilo. Is this Congressman Defensor? O kay buboy ba ito? Ang Dumanggas ay modelo sa climate field school. Knowing local risks to natural hazards and improving early warning systems to reach the last mile and to ensure early action at household and community level in Legaspi, Albay. Unang-unang, si Kong Joey Salceda na naging modelo ang probinsya ng Albay nung siya inaging gobernador. Preparedness for emergency response to and swift recovery from the cascading impact of extreme weather events, including contingency planning and drills in Pampanga, which was awarded the Best Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council at the 20F Gawad Kalasag Search for Excellence in Disaster Risk Reduction and Management and Humanitarian Assistance. Is this the project of Kong Bondok? Whichever it is, I am certain he must have been a part of this. These are just some of the many dozens, hundreds, thousands of examples. I may not have mentioned all. I am certain in some far-flung sitio, there are adaptation measures in our midst. While we already have the policies in place to enhance the adaptive capacities of our local communities, we must also address the gaps in local data and science on climate risks and hazards to guide our local action. The Local Climate Change Action Plan, or the LCAP, of our LGUs must be quality-assured and enhanced to become science-based and risk-informed so they can be more responsive to the prevailing and emerging needs of our local communities for climate change adaptation. We must also continue allocating financial resources for adaptation interventions such as improved water management, the promotion of sustainable livelihoods, the establishment of early warning, early action systems, the formulation of evacuation and contingency plans, and the resettlement of populations at risk. We must move from project-based efforts towards a holistic, programmatic approach to sustain initiatives for long-term and gender-responsive adaptation measures. And we must sustain our call for climate justice, which has been the result of the Duterte administration, to demand from the developed nations their fair share in addressing this climate crisis and for them to honor their commitments on climate finance, technology transfer, and capacity building for us developing countries to meet the costs of adaptation. We welcome the outcome of the UN Climate Action Summit convened by UN Secretary-General Antonio Guterres and attended by over 65 heads of state and government last Monday in New York, particularly climate finance pledges and carbon neutrality and emission reduction plans of certain developed countries, local governments, and private sectors; national plans by vulnerable developing countries to enhance adaptation efforts. I echo the call of our Climate Change Commission for developed countries to deliver promptly on their financing commitment under the Paris Agreement for the climate actions of developing countries, starting with the immediate replenishment of the Green Climate Fund. Developed countries must also exhibit greater ambition and action to reduce their carbon emissions significantly. As the Global Commission on Adaptation puts it, ambitious mitigation is still the best form of adaptation because emissions reductions minimize the scale of the problem that we need to address. The only fitting response to the climate emergency is to change our ways, from the way we think, from the way we live, to our way of pursuing development. We have no other choice now but to adapt to a fast-warming world fraught with danger. We have no other choice now but to win our economies from over-dependence on fossil fuel at the shortest time possible. We have no other choice now but to act together bolder and faster to rein the runaway global warming to below our resilience threshold of 1.5 degrees Celsius. The Low Carbon Revolution is at hand. We must green our technologies and our industries. We must green all the sectors of our economy. We have green jobs, which is already a law, and not just lip service, but actually transition. We legislators must fully understand the state of climate, the state of our climate crisis we're in, so we may be able to put forward policies that would steer our country towards the right direction. I call on my colleagues in my new house, in my beloved house now, to heed the call of our youths, to rise to the climate challenge, to uphold the Climate Change Act, and all the other ecological and environmental laws of our land. I call also on all our national and local government officials to implement our environmental and climate change laws and policies and to ensure that climate change adaptation and mitigation is mainstreamed in all policies, plans, and programs. Let the climate science inform and guide every decision that we make. Let us all unite for global and local climate action. For everybody's action matters. Let us all unite for climate resilience, for despite the odds, we shall survive and thrive in this trying era of climate change. Because, as we all know, there is no Planet B. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Partelis for her manifestation.
Arlene Brosas of Gabriela is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a manifestation regarding the privileged speech of my distinguished colleague, Congresswoman Lauren Legarda. We support her in calling out the need to speak on climate change, climate adaptation, and climate action. According to the Institute for Economics and Peace Annual Global Peace Index, an estimated 971 million people globally live in areas with high or very high exposure to hazards such as cyclones, floods, bushfires, and rising sea levels. The proportion of those at-risk individuals who live in the Asia-Pacific region is twice as many as those in all other regions combined. What is more alarming is that the Philippines was ranked as the country with the highest risk of experiencing multiple climate hazards out of anywhere in the world. The Philippines is a climate-vulnerable country. While the country has made strong commitments in the Paris Agreement on Climate Change last 2017, there seems to be little effort from the government to address the harsh impacts of climate change. The government also failed to face the reality that huge coal and mining companies, agribusinesses, and tourism projects have been continuously destroying our environment. What's worse is that environmental activists who challenge powerful logging and mining companies face harassment and even death for opposing projects by big firms like Dole Philippines, Del Monte Philippines, San Miguel Corporation, Standard Chartered, and the World Bank. According to Global Witness, 30 killings of earth activists in 2018 made the Philippines the deadliest country in the world for land defenders. Their report also noted that the death toll was at least 113 since President Duterte assumed office in mid-2016. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, hindi lamang climate-vulnerable ang Pilipinas. This country is also among the world's deadliest countries for land and environmental defenders. The latest attack on environmental activists was just last month when Brandon Lee, a staunch environmental activist who helped indigenous people of the Cordillera against the huge mining companies, was attacked outside his home in Ifigao Province after he was called "an enemy of the state." Madam Speaker, honorable colleague, this representation calls the attention of the public and the international community on the attacks and other forms of violence that the rights activists and indigenous peoples are being subjected to. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, honorable colleague.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the kind and informed intervention of our esteemed colleague. I take note of all those, and what I can say is that in no instance should we tolerate any violence on any environmental defender, on any indigenous people, and we should never trample on the rights of our indigenous peoples, much less inflict violence on them. Thank you for your intervention.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Michael Defensor for his manifestation.
Representative Michael Defensor is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First and foremost, Madam Speaker, I'd like to commend the Honorable Deputy Speaker, former and future Senator Lauren Legarda, for her speech, Madam Speaker. As the champion of the environment and advocate of climate change, Madam Speaker, I support the advocacy of the Honorable Deputy Speaker. In fact, Madam Speaker, I was just talking to her earlier, that a senator from the United States was asking the CIA director not only about security questions, but foremost in their discussion was the climate change situation, not just in the U.S., but in the global platform, Madam Speaker. So with that, Madam Speaker, congratulations, and you have the untiring support, Madam Speaker, not only of myself, but of our colleagues in the Partelis Coalition. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the intervention of the kind gentleman from the Partelis because he represents two sectors. Having been Environment Secretary, he knows the environment sector very well, and especially now sees the inextricably linked correlation between climate change and the health sector. And so, thank you for that, and we will continue to work together. As I said, I am willing to share whatever I know in your districts, in your constituencies for climate adaptation, especially affecting our indigenous peoples and affecting the health sector. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Honorable Sara Ilago of Kabataan Partelis for her manifestation.
Representative Sara Ilago is now recognized.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Nagpapasalamat po tayo sa ating distinguished legislator Lauren Legarda sa kanyang pagpapakita rin ng kahalagahan, ng participasyon, ang pakikilahok ng mga kabataan sa usaping pang klima. Lalong-lalo na ngayon nakatatapos lamang ng global climate strike. Kung saan libo-libo na mga kabataang Pilipino, mga eskolar ng bayan sa buong bansa, sa kanilang mga eskwelahan, sa kanilang mga komunidad, sila po ay nagsalita at nananawagan na na tayo ay magdeklarah ng isang climate emergency at lahat ng mga prioridad, mga programa, aktibidad, mga proyekto ng gobyerno ay nararapat lamang na tumugon sa pangangailangan ng tao, ng kalikasan, at ng ating bayan. Nagagalak rin po akong maibahagi sa ating distinguished legislator. Nanari dito po ang mga organizers, ang Youth for Climate Strike, na ipakita niyo po sa isang larawan na gumawa ng mga napakamalikhain na mga placards na nagpapakita sa atin ng kanilang ibat-ibang mga panawagan. Nanari dito po sila at nais ko pong sila itumayo, upang makita po ng ating mga kapwa mga mabatas, mga kasamahan dito sa House of Representatives. Nagagalak din po tayo na maibahagi sa kapulungan na ito ang Unity Statement na ginawa ng 350.org, Youth for Climate Action in the Philippines, ang UP Saribuay, ang Kalikasan, at ng Agham Youth. Ito po ay naghahapag sa atin ng limang mahahalagang punto ng pagkilos. Unang-unang po dito ang tungkol sa panawagan ng climate justice. Pangalawa, ang kahalagahan ng climate action. Pangatlo, system change. Pangapat, ang pagtatanggol sa ating environmental defenders. At panglima, youth-led collective action. Madam Speaker, let me...
Madam Speaker, let me read an excerpt from the said Unity Statement drafted by our youth and student leaders acting in response to the climate emergency. Whereas, the call to demand climate justice from corporations and governments of major economies whose accountability stems from being the major contributors to environmental degradation and from their willful ignorance of the climate crisis seen through their continued use of environment-damaging chemicals and excessive carbon emissions. Second, whereas, the urgency of climate action means we need to act now. Third, the call for a system change recognizes the wasteful profit-oriented global system as the main factor of the ongoing climate crisis. Fourth, the call to defend environmental defenders stems from the thousands of human rights violations happening all around the globe. This year, the Philippines is number one globally in terms of slain environmental advocates. And lastly, Madam Speaker, distinguished legislator, the call for collective action that aims to create an alliance to unite the broadest sector, not only of the youth sector, but the Filipino people.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker, distinguished legislator. Napakalaking bagay ng mga modelo sa mga kabataan. Ngunit nakikita po natin, hindi lang mga kabataan, kundi maski mga bata ngayon. Ang siyang ginagamit at ipinapamala sa buong mundo, dito sa Pilipinas, na sila ay handa na tanggapin. Ang hamon bilang mga pag-asa ng bayan. Mga pag-asa ng bayan, Madam Speaker, na kumikilos para sa kanilang kapwa mamamayang Pilipino, para sa ating kalikasan, para sa ating planeta.
We reiterate, Madam Speaker, that there is no planet B.
Wala na po itong kinakailangan na panahon ng pagkilos, kundi ngayon na. Kaya, ang mga kabataan po, ang mga bata, ang mga iskolar ng bayan ay handang tanggapin ang hamon ng ating distinguished Honorable Lauren Legarda na siya po ay magbabahagi ng kanyang mga karanasan. Ang kanyang mga maibabahagi mula sa kanyang partisipasyon at pamumuno sa pangangalaga ng ating kalikasan at pagtatanggol ng mas magandang bukas para sa mamamayang Pilipino. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat sa ating distinguished sponsor. At bago ko po tapusin ang aking manifestasyon, nais ko lang din pong batiin, naririto po kasama natin ang Millennials PH, ang College Editors Guild of the Philippines, ang Youth 2030, ang Impact Hub Manila. Nandirito rin po ang nanay ni Karen Empenyo, isa pong land and environmental defender. Isa, ang kanyapong kaso ng enforced disappearance ay isa sa isang libo, siyamnaraan, at anim na putanim na mga dokumentadong kaso ng mga enforced disappearance. Napakahalaga, Madam Speaker, na pangangalaga sa ating mga karapatang pantao upang lahat po tayo ay magampanan ang ating tungkulin na tumindig at tumayo para sa tunay na malaya at masaganang Pilipinas. Maraming salamat po mali, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat po, Representative, the Honorable Lauren Legarda.
Madam Speaker, I am very grateful to this bright, young, articulate colleague Kong Ilago. And I know it is a youth who shall bear the responsibility. And I am excited and looking forward to helping not just your group, but especially the youth of our country. Nakasalalay sa inyong kamay ang pagpapatupad ng ating mga batas. Na gawanan natin ang batas, importante, hindi lang tayo magsalita sa session hall na ito o sa mga rallyman at sa strike, importante, ipatupad natin ang mga batas. Gaya ng paghiwalay ng basura, sa nabubulok at hindi nabubulok sa bawat barangay, sa bawat sityo, sa ating kapuluhan. Kung ito lang ay ginagawa ng bawat lokal na pamahalaan, ay siguro hindi tayo magkakaproblema sa mga landfill. Siguro hindi tayo ang number one sa buong mundo na nagdudulot ng maruming plastik galing sa ating karagatan. Siguro ang sakit na dinudulot ng mga dumi sa ating kapaligiran ay hindi magiging sanhi ng dengue. Inaasahan ko ang inyong bloke, ang inyong grupo, lalo na ang sa inyong grupong kabataan na ipatupad ang ating mga batas. Walo na ating binanggit, lalong-lalo na ang mga batas sa protection ng pagbabago ng klima at batas na nagproprotect at nagko conserve ng ating mga ecosystem. Ako'y nagpapasalamat sa inyo.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Edgar M. Chato for his interpretation.
Edgar Chato is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, Your Honor. The privileged speech was very, very timely. As we have also with us in this hall, our parliamentarians and delegates from the Australian Political Exchange Council, who were just introduced earlier. And it is headed by the co-chair of the Committee on Environment of the Australian Parliament. And I would like to thank the distinguished representative of the Lone District of Antique, former senator and my former classmate at the University of the Philippines for the very passionate and thought-provoking privileged speech. We do respect, Madam Speaker, Your Honor, the distinguished Congresswoman Legarda has been a consistent advocate for environmental protection and preservation, even in our university days. And I would like to invite him to join us and help us and support the Committee on Climate Change, which needs the expertise of the former senator. My inobedience speaker, if she will be willing and able, of course, all the time to share her expertise.
In fact, I intend to join you, our esteemed representative from one of my favorite provinces of Bohol in your organizational meeting tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
I even remember, among our numerous committee meetings, I recall that there was a 1 o'clock organizational meeting of the commission or the committee which you chair. I will be more than happy being the author of the Climate Change Act and the People Survival Fund and the Eighth Environmental Laws. I am not the best expert, but I'm willing to share with you my knowledge on climate and environment. But I am certain that many in this hall today, including your good self, would have local adaptation measures and policies and projects happening in your barangays, in your sitios, which you can share. Imagine if all of us, more than 300 here, would come up with a booklet, one page each, that's 300, of local climate adaptation measures, whether it's an early warning system, whether it's mangrove reforestation, or it is even reusing plastics or banning single-use plastic bag. If you can put all these learnings and local climate action in one pamphlet or even put it online in a blog or in a blog, then that would be so instructional for the youths and all sectors of society. And so, yes, I will be more than happy to join you and together, along with our esteemed colleagues, we can really revolutionize and change the way we think, the way we live, and the way we have handled climate in our midst. Thank you, my dear esteemed classmate and former governor and now congressman once again.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And let me inform the good Representative of Antique, our organizational meeting will be tomorrow at 1 o'clock. Let me raise another point, Madam Speaker. The Philippines is ranked among the highest, you know, the countries experiencing multiple climate hazards. And in our recent approval of the 2020 budget, may I know from our distinguished speaker, Representative of Antique, if honestly you feel that the budget has been sufficiently allocated or adequate for the climate change programs and advocacies, not only of the Climate Change Commission, but also of the other agencies which should put into the heart of it climate change adaptation and mitigation as part of their budgets?
I'm glad that Your Honor mentioned this because in the four years that I chaired the Finance Committee, I made sure that the allocations are not simply for one department or one commission. In fact, as Kong Joey Salceda would know, it should be a whole-of-government approach and a whole-of-society approach, meaning that whether the budget is for the Department of Education or if it is for the Department of Agriculture or Public Works, that the mainstreaming of climate change adaptation, mitigation, and reducing disaster risk must be there. Tomorrow, I will bring some of the special provisions that I have put in the past year's budget in the GA. So that perhaps it's no longer with us in the Baikam, our Chair Kong Ungab or DS Finance Elray could adopt it. It is no monetary counterpart, but these are special and general provisions that would compel our departments and agencies to mainstream climate change adaptation. What do I mean? The Rainwater Collection Act is a 1989 law, long before you and I became lawmakers. Long before I became a senator, I was much too young then and you were not yet a local government official then. However, if only each of us, in every school that we have built, in every barangay hall, in every hospital, in every home, would have a rainwater collector. Hindi po sayang ang tubig na galing sa alulod ng ating mga tahanan. Sa panahon ng tagtuyot ay meron nakaimbak na tubig na pwedeng gamitin para sa mga halamanan o para sa paglinis ng ibang bagay na hindi naman kailangan 'yung tubig ng nawasa o 'yung tubig na galing sa water district. Pangalawa po, hindi naman kailangan palaging semento ng semento ang ginagamit para sa seawall. As we very well know, when Typhoon Yolanda happened in Giwann in Samar, correct me if I'm wrong, our representatives would know best, dahil kung saan po makapal ang mga mangroves, I think pati si Camotes Island sa Cebu, ay dun hindi masyadong nasalanta ang mga tahanan at ang mga tao. In short, there was zero casualty or less loss to livelihood where there were untouched mangroves in that area. So, early warning system, for example. 'Yung pag-caskey ng impormasyon tungkol sa pag-aabiso, tungkol sa early warning ng pag-asa, ay dapat sa simpleng pamamaraan at sa lalong madaling panahon para hindi na kailangan pumaulaon sa karagatan ang ating mga mangingsda, pa na rin makalikas ang mga tao mula sa mga paanang bundok kung saan sila nakatira at malipat na sa mga evacuation center ang mga tao na dapat nag-undergo ng environment impact assessment at ng site and land inspection bago pinayuyan. Maraming pamamaraan kung paano ma-reduce ang ating disaster risk, kung paano maghanda at paano maapma ang ating pamumuhay sa tinatawag na pagbabago ng klima. We may not be able to change extreme weather events, but the way we adapt to these natural occurrences, when we reduce the risk, then we become more resilient. But everything should be science-based, everything should be risk-informed, and everything should be based on natural hazards and vulnerabilities.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, Your Honor. And with respect to budget, we filed an institutional amendment for the proposed 2020 national budget to increase allocations for the programs, not only in the Climate Change Commission, but on other agencies. With your expertise as a former senator and chair of the Appropriations or Finance Committee of the Senate, I am very sure that you would know which part of the budgets would be able to have provisions, as you have mentioned now, that can also support this particular advocacy. I'm sure of that, Madam Speaker. So I would hope that we can work in the same direction in supporting also the institutional amendments that we have proposed earlier.
I would be happy to join you and echo your amendments and perhaps bring it to the attention of our colleagues in the Senate, Chairman Angara, and the others so that the leadership can decide to adopt it, even as a Senate amendment. If it has some remuneration, then some budgets must be cut in some agencies. If it is simply a general or special provision, that will be easily approved, perhaps. But I will join you nevertheless.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. One final point, with the conclusion of the UN Summit and the advocacies, not only in the Philippines, but all over the world, with respect to climate change, adaptation, mitigation, and other measures, this representation is filing a resolution, a resolution expressing the sense of the House of Representatives for climate justice, strengthened implementation of climate change and environmental sustainability laws in the country and for developed countries to deliver on their commitments. I would hope, Madam Speaker, that the distinguished advocate senator, now Congresswoman from Antique would be supporting us and encourage also the rest of the members of the House that we can have one unified voice on this particular resolution that we are filing, Madam Speaker.
Of course, we'll be more than happy to share with you those advocacy and to co-author your... So two things, we will co-author your resolution. And second, we join you in the budget initiatives when it reaches the Senate. I think it will be received tomorrow. And we will help lobby for the adoption of the institutional amendments of the Congressman from Bohol.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to extend the privilege hour for another hour.
Is there any objection? There being none. The time of the distinguished lady from the Lone District of Antique is hereby extended.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Elisa Ko for her manifestation.
Yes, the distinguished lady from Masbate is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to commend our Deputy Speaker Lauren Legarda for being the champion of this climate change awareness. I was with her last 2018 in Germany. And during those forum, I had goosebumps because we know that climate change is real and it affects not only a single part of our sector, like agriculture, but it involves everything and it involves everybody, including not only agriculture, but the increasing population itself contributes to climate change. We are emitters of carbon dioxide. Our livestock are emitters of carbon dioxide. And every aspect of our lives is affected by climate change. We may not get the impact of climate change right now, but our children and our grandchildren will experience the disastrous effect of climate change. And so, it's high time that we must act. And as our distinguished Congressman from Antique, being the champion of this climate change is very much aware of this and must be commended for her advocacy. And in fact, after that forum in Germany, this 18th Congress, I really accepted or I really asked our Speaker to be the Vice Chair of the Committee on Climate Change or Special Committee on Climate Change. And in fact, together with some of our colleagues, we've refiled a bill that for every birth of a child, one tree must be planted by either any of his or her relatives. So once more, I congratulate our Deputy Speaker Lauren Legarda for being a very, very champion or a very strict advocate of climate change. Thank you, Madam... Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to thank the good lady representative from the province of Masbate. I am certain you are a climate advocate because Masbate is considered one of the most vulnerable provinces in the Philippines. With sea level rise... With sea level rise, you also bear the brunt of storm surge and typhoons. And as a local government official, having been provincial governor, you know the effects on your farmers and your fisher folks. And we know that the issue of climate is also every inch a woman and girl's issue. Ang mga babae, ang mga ina, ay nangangailangan ng tulong sa panahon ng tagtuyot, sa panahon ng tag-ulan. At ang mga... Kasi manu ako sa Antike, gaya po ng kababayan niyo sa Masbate, ang siyang nasasalanta sa pagbabago ng klima, bagyo man o sa panahon ng laninyaman o panahon ng elninyo. Ako po'y nagpapasalamat sa kanoyong binigay na impormasyon at sa inyong pakikiisa sa ating climate action at climate agenda. Thank you very much, Farmer Governor, Congresswoman Ko.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
We thank the distinguished representative from the second district of Masbate for her manifestations, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Rufi Biazon of the lone district of Montinlupa City for his interpretation.
The gentleman from Montinlupa City is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the distinguished lady yield to a few questions?
Yes, of course. So, it's my honor, Mr. Speaker, to yield to the interpolations of the son of a former colleague who was a principal author and sponsor of the National Disaster Risk Reduction Management Law of 2010, along with Senator Gordon and this representation.
Indeed, Mr. Speaker. It's also an honor and pleasure to engage in an exchange with the colleague of my father who served in the upper chain.
I am not your father's age, however.
That is very clear, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, this representation spends a lot of time underwater. I go scuba diving at least once a month, and have been doing so for many years. And as such, I've been witness to the harm that humans have inflicted on the ocean with the amount of garbage that we see underwater, and the effect of climate change in the form of bleached corals. It now gives us that idea that we should not just be simply compliant to international methods or expectations with regard to upholding the climate, but we should probably be taking the leadership, especially that we are living in a country where we are surrounded by seas, basically an archipelago with 7,107 islands. Does the distinguished lady agree that this kind of leadership is now imperative for the Philippines to take on?
I am so glad, Mr. Speaker, that our good representative from Montinlupa is speaking of climate leadership. In fact, the Philippines has seized, or at least tried to seize, climate leadership in the global arena because we are one of the founders of the V20. This is a congregation of climate vulnerable nations from 2009. It was in 2009, Mr. Speaker, when this representation, as a second-term senator, went to Maldives to meet with President Nasheed, who is now in exile in the UK, but that's a different political story. He, as you know, was one of the global leaders who conducted his cabinet meeting underwater because he is a diver like yourself. But I wonder now how his cabinet performed, or they happen to all be divers in the Maldives. To make a long story short, it was our discussions and presentation on coming up with a voice for climate vulnerable nations, whether for developing nations like the Philippines, which is an archipelago, or small island states such as the Maldives, and we created the Climate Vulnerable Forum. The CVF has since grown to more than 40 nations, and years later, I believe it was the Finance Ministers of these climate vulnerable nations that congregated and evolved into the V20 of the Finance Ministers. So, we must not allow ourselves or our voices to be drowned in all the talk, in all the problems on different issues. And the Philippines, as the victim of Hayan or Yolanda, as the victim of more than 20 typhoons a year, as a vulnerable nation, as you very well said, must seize that leadership opportunity, not just for one time, not just for one organization, but all of the time, and to actually ask for technologies, for climate finance, to be able to help local climate action and help our local governments adapt to changing climate. Yes, my answer, my short answer to your question is yes, we should continue our leadership in the climate arena, fighting for nations who are similarly situated, vulnerable nations like the Philippines.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the distinguished lady and I are in agreement that we should take leadership, not just in the international forums, but more so in the local practices, as she had mentioned, the local governments. What is the relation of our ocean's health to climate change?
Hmm, napakahalaga ng ipaliwanag natin na ang climate change ay hindi lang isang konsepto para sa ating mga sayantipiko o para sa mga experto. Climate change is inextricably linked to health. What do I mean? Pag tumas po ang temperatura ng ating klima, nag-iiba po ang galaw o ang buhay ng ating mga hayop. Vector borne diseases also become more widespread. The Dengue epidemic is linked to the increase in our climate, and this happens in tropical and subtropical climates. For example, as simple as the non-implementation of Ecological Solid Waste Management Law, or RA 9003. We're not even talking about climate yet here, we're simply looking at the non-implementation of a law. When we have large dump sites, and we do not segregate our garbage at source, recycle, and compost, this causes, of course, many diseases. Health and sanitation are affected by huge dump sites, garbage dump sites, which have been outlawed since the enactment of this law in January of 2001, and the phase-out of open dumps was in year 2005 or 2006. How many local governments still have open dumps? How many local governments are actually compliant with RA 9003? Only 25% of all LGUs are following it. Sabi po nila, ay hindi to kayang gawin. Kung kaya po ng isang barangay, bakit hindi kaya ng ibang barangay sa 42,000 barangays? So, health and sanitation, the issues of environment and climate, magkakapatid po yan. Pag hindi natin bigyan ng halaga at hindi natin sundin ang mga polisiya, programa ng ating kapaligiran at kalikasan at ng pagbabago ng klima, sigurado po ako na ang mga sakit, dulot ng ating pagwalang bahala sa climate change ay lalong dadagsa at lalo makakaapekto sa ating mga kabataan, sa kababaihan. And so, the budgets that we have for rehabilitation, for medicines, for medical assistance, all of this can be used if preventive measures were done, and we could actually reduce all these illnesses only if we implemented our policies and programs. Pag tayo po ay mas aware at mas sumusunod sa mga polisiya, ayon sa pagbabago ng klima at ayon sa kalikasan, sigurado po ako na ang ating mga sakit ay bababa ang numero. I would like to quote also a United Nations study that oceans absorb about 30% of carbon dioxide emissions, and can actually help mitigate the impact of global warming. However, human activities that cause pollution, deplete fisheries, and loss of coastal habitats heavily affect as much as 40% of the world's oceans. What do I mean? Ang ating galaw bilang nilalang ng ating mundo, ang siyang nakakasagabal o ang siyang nakakaapekto sa ating mga pang-araw-araw na buhay, at kasama na po dyan ang ating healthcare, sanitation. And so, climate change and health, climate change and agriculture, climate change and environment are issues that are inextricably linked and must be discussed and must be addressed together. It is not climate change in isolation of the scientific term in itself.
My distinguished colleague mentioned about the health of oceans impacted by human For example, the destruction or the imbalance of the ecosystem results in the destruction of coral reefs, which serve as the radiators of the ocean, supposed to be regulating the temperature, avoiding warming of our oceans, which lead to stronger typhoons, severe weather. But there are practices by people which cause the imbalance of the ecosystem, such as unsustainable fishing practices, cyanide fishing, blast fishing, bottom trolling, and the like. And as I mentioned earlier, we being an archipelagic country, these waters surrounding us are supposed to be under the care of local governments and national government as well. Would the lady agree with me that this responsibility to prevent these kinds of activities in our waters could be a way for us to manifest our climate leadership?
You're correct. Mr. President, all climate action, just like politics, is local, meaning whichever policies or laws that we enact nationally as lawmakers, even if our districts and our provinces that we represent enact all the local ordinances, but if the local chief executives, if the barangay chairman, if those in coastal communities, for example, don't abide by this, then that would cause a big problem. And so, it is important that everybody is climate engaged, that they understand the impact of their actions on the fish catch, on tourism, on the sustainable livelihoods that sustain their lives. Kaya, ang issue po ng pagbabago ng klima, it's an everyman's issue. Ito po'y issue ng mangingsda at magsasaka. Ito'y issue ng katutubo at issue ng negosyante. Ito'y issue ng politiko at issue ng guro. Issue sa bawat Pilipino, sa bawat nilalang ng mundo. Tama po kayo, being an archipelagic nation, kailangan natin pangalagaan ang ating karagatan, ang ating oceans. Gaya po ng sinabi ko, tayo ay isa sa pinakamataas na puluter ng ating karagatan. In fact, number one, in terms of microplastics and single-use plastics. Nakakadiri po ang ating karagatan dahil dun tayo nagtatapon ng ating mga duming plastic. If only we segregated waste at source, recycle, and compost, and strictly ban single-use plastics, and strictly monitor our throwaway culture, then perhaps, not just as divers, but even our fisher folks would not be as adversely affected as they are now. I appreciate your mentioning the oceans. I would also like to include our lakes, our rivers, our inland bodies of water. They're the source of our very life. Why should we use it as our sewage? Wag nating gawing poso negro ang ating mga ilog dahil madalas, walang sewage, walang wastewater treatment. Tinawag nga ni Pangulo na sespool ang burakay. Ilan pa po, ang burakay, how many more burakays are there in our midst? Perhaps, the rivers and lakes and water systems in our districts are similarly situated. Should we wait for this to transform into sespools before we act? At ang kaganapan ito ay makakaapekto sa mahirap na galing ang kain nilang kinakain sa pang-araw-araw sa mga dulot ng mga water system na ito. So, I'm one with you in protecting our oceans and our water system, and I hope that in our watch, we could make sure and compel each local government to be responsible, not just for its land, but for its water systems within its district or its jurisdiction as well.
Well, Mrs. Speaker, distinguished colleague, definitely within our territorial waters, we should take that leadership. May I ask the thoughts of my distinguished colleague? How about our exclusive economic zones, which is beyond our territorial boundaries? But we have been given sovereign rights over exploitation of the natural resources there. What kind of leadership should we be taking in that part of the ocean?
Well, first, our inland waters, as well as waters surrounding us, and all waters within our territory to the best of our ability, notwithstanding the limited resources of our Coast Guard and our navy, but admittedly realizing what in reality actually happens, we are sorely lacking in supervising, in monitoring, much more in caring for our territorial waters. Let us discuss the territorial jurisdiction and the ownership in another venue. Whether it is claimed by another claimant or not, we must take care of it, and that is an inherent right that we have, and perhaps, in so doing, that can even assert our right further in claiming the waters in our territory. But if we can't even take care of our waters in our midst, how can we even say that we will care, monitor, supervise, implement our laws in the waters around us? We don't have to look far, Mr. President. Ang mga ilog sa Metro Manila, the dirtiest rivers are found in Luzon. Nakakahiyah po, nakakasuklam, hindi natin dapat payagan. Dapat po, I call on the DILG to make all the mayors, governors, responsible for the water systems in their midst, to make sure that no solid, liquid, or human waste is thrown in our waterways. Yun po, that is a source of the food of our people. Wag nating gawing sespool, wag nating gawing poso negro ang ating pinakukuhanan ng pagkain ng ating mga pamilya na mangingsda.
Mr. Speaker, it has really been a pleasure exchanging with my distinguished colleague. I wish I could engage her in a longer interpolation.
We have three years and more, Mr. Speaker. We have three years and more, Mr. Speaker.
But there would be other venues. As I close, Mr. Speaker, as agreed earlier, we should be taking a leadership on climate change, not just within our territorial jurisdiction by employing local laws and ordinances, but even in international venues. And as I recognize that our armed forces, our coast guard has very limited resources and capabilities, I think in the international arena, the Philippines can still take leadership in calling out international or foreign persons or entities who engage in unsustainable exploitation of oceans around us, not just within our territorial boundaries, but even within our exclusive economic zones. Because if we are to take leadership, we must speak out, especially in the international arena, to call out such kinds of practices, which have an impact not just for us today, but more so in the future. Again, I thank my distinguished colleague for this opportunity. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I take this opportunity to thank my esteemed colleague from Montinlupa? I used to enjoy these discussions as well in my other house with his esteemed father. And I thank him for that.
Thank you, Honorable Representative from the Lone District of Montinlupa City, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Lauren Legarda to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection there being none? Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Gaithe of the Partelis Bayan Muna to avail of the remaining time of the privilege our. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Bayan Muna, Partelis, is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat po. Mr. Speaker, ang aking privilege speech ang lalamin ay hingil sa health and nursing in crisis. Ginong speaker, mga kapwa mamabatas, isang magandang hapgabi na sa ating lahat. Kahit pang usaping aking tatalakayin ay hindi masasabing maganda, bagkus nakakapag-alala at nakaka-alarma. Nitong September 19, 2017, sa gitna ng ating maiinted debate at talakayan hingil sa panukalang pambasang budget sa taong dalawang pu, dalawang pu, nagdiklara ang Department of Health ng polio outbreak sa bansa, matapos makupirmang positibo sa polio virus. Ang isang tatlong taong gulang ng bata sa lanaw del sur at kontaminado ang nasabing virus ang samples mula sa katubigan sa Maynila at gayun din sa Davao. Labing siyam na taon ng polio virus free ang Pilipinas. At ang huling kaso ay naitala nga noong 1993. Pero hindi lamang ito ang hindi magandang balita. Ginong permarin ng Department of Health na tumaas ang kaso ng dipteria. Ayon sa Department of Health Epidemiology Bureau nitong September 17, may naitalang 167 na kaso ng dipteria sa buong bansa. Apatapu rito ang namatay. Mas mataas ito sa isandaan dalawang pu, dalawang kaso at tatumpung namatay noong isang taon. Matatandaang nitong Agosto 19, 2017, nagdiklara ng national epidemic ng dengue ang Department of Health, matapos makapagtala ng 146,062 na kaso ng dengue mula Enero hanggang Julio 20 nitong taon. 98% na mas mataas sa kaparehong buwan noong nakaraang taon. May 622 na ang namamatay sa dengue. Mas baagapan itong, noong nitong Febrero 2017, nagdiklara, Madam, Mr. Speaker, ang Department of Health ng measles outbreaks sa limang region. Kabila na ang Metro Manila, Central Luzon, Calabarzon, Western Visayas, at Central Visayas Region. Sa datos nitong Abril 2017, may 31,056 na kaso na ng measles at 450 naman ang pagkamatay dahil sa sakit na ito. Sa ilang ulat, sinasabing ang Pilipinas ang isa sa may pinakamalalang outbreak sa mundo. Tatlong outbreaks na epidemia. Hindi ito biro, ginong speaker. Nangangamatay ang mga bata sa mga sakit na nakontrol at nairadicate na sa mga nasa bansa noong nakalipas na mga taon at dikada. Nagkakasakit at namamatay sa mga sakit na maari naman sanang iwasan. May crisis sa kalusugan. Isang public health crisis na dapat ugatin, harapin, at solusyonan. May sakit ang pampublikong serbisyong pangkalusugan. Ginong speaker, paano tayo nasadlok at nabalik sa ganitong kalagayan? Nakita sa isang pag-aaral nitong 2018 na bumagsak ang tiwala sa bakuna mula sa 93% on 2015 tungo sa 32% na lamang nitong 2018. Inuugnay ito sa multibilyong eskandalo ng bakunang dengbaksya nitong 2016, kung saan wala pa ni isang napapanagot o napaparasuhan. Para sa mga nurses at health workers, dumadagdag lamang ang tinatawag nilang vaccine scare, na matagal ng panahon nagpagpapabaya sa kalusugan sa ating mga mamamayan. Inaamin ang Department of Health Secretary Francisco Duque III na napakababa ng average national polio immunization coverage na nasa 66 to 68% lamang, malayo sa itinakdang 95% ng World Health Organization. Ayon mismo sa datos ng World Health Organization at UNICEF, bumagsak ang immunization program coverage sa polio, dipteria, pertussis, at tetanus mula sa 91% on 2008 tungo sa 66 at 65% na lamang nitong 2018 ayon sa pagkakasunod-sunod. Sa measles, mula 58% on 2008, tumaas ng 80% on 2017, pero muling bumagsak ito ng 59% nitong 2018. Biroin niyo, ginong speaker, may pagkakataon palang stuck out o wala ng bakuna sa bansa sa loob ng isa hanggang siyam na buwan. Makikita na mulat taong 2007 ni hindi umabot sa target na 95% immunization ang coverage laban sa mga sakit na naturan. Ayon sa Commission on Audit Reports nitong 2017, aabot sa 56% hanggang 96% ang under distribution ng bakuna para sa polio, VPT, at measles nitong 2017. May libo-libong vaccine carriers, cold boxes, and refrigerators na natenga sa warehouses ng siyam hanggang dalawang buwan as of December 2017. Sabi ng Department of Health sa kanilang kampanya, una ang bakuna. Pero bakit pinabayaan pala at hindi naipamigay ang mga bakuna at cold chain carriers? Bakit bumabagsak na pala ang coverage ng pagbabakuna, pero hindi naman lumaki ang budget para dito? At para nga sa taong 2020, kakaltasan pa ang budget para sa pagbabakuna at kaugnay ng public health programs ng Department of Health. Para sa taong 2020, kakaltasan ang National Immunization Program ng halos anim na milyon piso. Kakaltasang ang Environment and Occupational Health Program ng dalawang pu siyam na milyon piso. Kakaltasan ng 147 milyon piso ang Epidemiology and Surveillance Program, na kailangan na kailangan para imapout at aralin ang paghahanap ng mga outbreaks at sakit. Ginong speaker, may walong bilyong pisong laan sa intelligence at confidential funds. May 25 bilyong piso sa pagbili ng mga armas at gamit militar. May anim na puttatlong bilyong piso pa sa right-of-way o pagdemolish ng mga dadaanan na mga build-build-build projects, pero ni hindi maibalik ang sampung bilyong piso na cutbacks sa health. Bakit sa hinabaha ng panahon ginagawa ng Department of Health ang pagbabakuna at sa haba ng panahong intulak natin ang dagdag na personnel at regularisasyon ng libo-libong mga kontraktwal sa Department of Health sa sabihin ngayon ni Secretary Duque na may kakulangan ng staff para sa immunization program? Ginong speaker, ngayong Oktober ay National Nurses Month. Pero ang ating nurses na dapat ay katuwang natin sa pagharap sa public health crisis na ito, ay naharap din sa tinatawag na nursing crisis. Ang mga nag-aaruga ay kailangan rin ng aruga dahil sila mismo ay may malubhang karamdaman. Ginong speaker, nauubos na ang ating mga nurses dahil sa mababang pasweldo, kontraktualisasyon, kulang na benepisyo, patuloy na dumarami ang mga nag-aabroad, nagiging call center agent, o iba pang di kaugnay ng trabaho, malayo sa tinatawag na patient care. So, humigit kumulang 90,308 nurses nitong 2017 ayon sa datos ng Philippine Nurses Association, 23,547 lamang ang nasa komunidad. Kontraktwal ang bahigit sa 10,000 na nasa mga ospital at lampas-lampas pa rito ang mga kontraktwal na nasa komunidad. Paano natin matutulungan? Magtutugunan ang kakulangan sa staffing kung hindi natin makukumbinsing manatili ang ating mga nurses at maglingkod lalo sa mga komunidad? Paano ang ating mga kababayan kung patuloy na hindi dinadagdagan at di pinupunoan ng gobyerno ang kulang na plantilia positions at unfilled positions sa ospital man o sa komunidad? Parating walang pondo para sa nahi-hingingin 30,000 na minimum na sweldo para sa ating mga nurses at ni hindi magawang bigyan ng permanenteng posisyon ang mga kontraktwal? Ginong speaker, buhay at kaligtasan ng ating kababayan ang kapalit ng mahabang panahon ng pagpapabaya sa kalusugan. Ginong speaker, malaki ang panalagutan ng pamahalaan sa pagusbong muli ng polio, measles, dipteria, at iba pang sakit na lumalaganap sa lipunan. Sa halip na paglaanan ang limang porsyento ng gross domestic product na siyang rekommendasyon ng World Health Organization, iisang porsyento lamang ang nilalaan ng gobyerno para sa serbisyong pangkalusugan. Kinakaltas pa ang podong laan para sa kalusugan. Taon-taon, halos bumabagsak ang podong laan para sa pampublikong ospital. Tumataas ang bayarin at halaga ng mga gamot, laboratories, and procedures. Maraming proyekto ang hindi pinakikinabangan na mamamayan sa bilyong-bilyong halaga ng proyekto sa ilaling ng HFEP. Kinukurakot ang bilyong pisong perang inilaan para sa field health. Isina sa pribado ang serbisyo at mga pampublikong ospital. Lahat na ay may bayad. Kahit kapamaan ay may field health dahil kulang ang gamit, gamot, at supply, kailangan magcash out ang mga pasyente. Wala na ang dating panahon na kapag naconfine ang isang mahirap na pampublikong ospital, libre lahat mula sa kwarto, gamot, gamit, supply, at operasyon na di na kailangan magfield health. Pumila mula madaling araw sa DSWD, PCSO, o 'yung tinatawag na malasakit centers, at magmamakaawa sa mga kongresista at senador. Sa halip na paunlarin ang kabuhayan, lalo naghihirap at nagkakasakit ang ating mga ordinaryo mamamayan, tulad na mga magsasaka, manggagawa, bunga ng pagbagsak ng presyo ng palay at produksyong agricultural at kawalan ng lupa, pag-iral din ng di makataong sahod, kontraktualisasyon, at kawalan ng trabaho. Kung wala kahit pa masahe, papunta sa health center, paano magpapabakuna mga bata? Kung walang pagkaing masustansya, paano lalabanan ng mga mal-nourished na katawan ang virus na tigdas, polio, dipteria, o dengue? Paano kung gayon haharapin ang crisis sa kalusugan ng mamamayan? Hindi sasapat at hindi solusyon-solusyonan ang patse-patsing panapanahong vaccination drives lamang ang tugon sa crisis sa kalusugan. Sa kagyat, kailangan ibalik ang tinanggal na budget at dagdagan pa ang budget sa public health at laanan na sapat na budget ang mga pampublikong pagamutan, health centers, at ospital. Kailangan ang sapatapondo sa bakuna, environment sanitation, at epidemiological surveillance. Hindi karagdagang surveillance o paniktik sa mga komunidad at tatake laban sa pinagsususpetsahan at tinatatakang kalaban ng administrasyon. Kung nais natin maligtas ang buhay, hindi pera para sa kil-kil-kil, kundi sapatapondo para sa kalusugan at serbisyong panlipunan. Kailangan ibalik ang tiwala ng mamamayan sa bakuna, sa matyaga, at tuloy-tuloy na health education, kasabay ang pagpapanagot sa lahat ng sangkot sa dengbaksya scandal. Kailangan ang lahatang panig na pagtugon sa pagtaas ng budget, pagsasaayos sa orientasyon at sistema ng pangangalagang pangkalusugan, at pagpapabuti sa kabuhayan ng mamamayan. Kailangan natin ang komprensibong serbisyong pangkalusugan na direktang nakalaan sa pampublikong pagamutan, hindi na kailangan ipadaan sa iba't-ibang burokraticong andana, gaya ng field health. Sapat na pondo, sapat gamit, sapat gamot at supply at personnel sa mga pampublikong ospital at health centers. Kailangan baguhin ang orientasyon na serbisyong pangkalusugan mula sa isang komersalisadong serbisyo tungo sa tunay na pagseserbisyo at itigil ang patakaran pribatisasyon. Hikayatin natin manatili, bumalik at maglingkod sa bayan ang ating mga nurses at health workers sa pagbibigay sa kanila ng sapat na sweldo, benepisyo, at regular na trabaho. Mr. Speaker, kailangan natin pataasin ang antas ng pamumuhay ng mayorya ng ating mamamayan. Lalo na ang mga magsasaka at manggagawa dahil hanggang lugbo, dahil hanggang lugbo sila sa kahirapan, manatiling vulnerable ang mga bata at mamamayan sa mga sakit, outbreaks, at epidemia. Sa harap ng nakababahalang sitwasyon ng pangkalusugan, kukunan ng mamamayan ang pag-asa ang organisadong pagkilos at pagsikap para isulong ang karapatan at kalusugan. Bigyan natin ang pagkilala at suporta ang ating mga nurses, health workers, at mga community at barangay health workers na patuloy na nagbibigay serbisyo sa mamamayan, kahit sa pinakamalayong barrio, sa mga kabukiran at kabundukan. Ang mga makabaya, mga nurse, doktor, health nurses, health workers, at health advocates na tagkapaglingkod ng mamamayan ay dapat rin natin suportahan. Hindi dapat sila tinatakot, pinararatangan, sinasampahan ng gawa-gawang kaso, inaaresto, at ang pinakamalubha, pinapatay. Ang mamamayan at health workers ang magkatuwang para harapin ang crisis sa kalusugan. Maraming pwedeng magawa ang mga tunay na tagkapaglingkod ng bayan para itulak ang mga pagbabago sa kalusugan na puputol sa paulit-ulit na sitwasyon ng outbreaks at epidemia. Kung tunay tayong nasa panig ng mamamayan, makaisa tayo para sa kagyat na harapin at tugunan ang public health crisis at nursing crisis. Sama-sama tayong kumilos para sa pagbabago tungo sa mas malusog, makatao, at makatalungang lipunan. At panghuli, Mr. Speaker, nagpupugay rin ang kinatawang ito sa diniklara ng ating galanggalang na speaker ng ating kapulungan sa buwan ng House of Representatives. At binabati ko ang ating mga kawan sa kanilang pagpupursigi, sa kanilang pagsisilbi. At binabati ko ang ating mga kawani sa kanilang pagpopursigi, sa kanilang pagsisilbi para sa mga mamamayan. At ang kinatawang ito ay handang tumulong para ang mga karapatan tulad ng datatanggap ng ating kapuakawani sa Senado na ang kanilang karapatan sa the right to organize or self-organization, the right to collective bargaining and negotiations. At kasama ang karapatan na bagsagawa ng mga mapayapang pagkilos ay sana sa ating mga kasapi sa kapulungan ito ay tulungan natin ang ating mga kapuakawani sa loob ng House of Representatives para mabigyan nila sila ng pagpapaunlad sa kanilang kalagayan sa trabaho, mag-improve ang kanilang kalagayan sa sahod, benepisyo, at gayun din ang kalagayan na marami pa rin sa kanila ay hindi pa rin nakakabiaya bilang regular na empleyado. Iyan lang po, Mister Speaker, maraming salamat po.
Uh, Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Loren Legarda of the Long District of Antike for her manifestation.
The Honorable Representative from the Long District of Antike is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I would just like to make a manifestation. I express my appreciation to Congressman Gaita for bringing to our attention the public health crisis. I also want to put on record, Mister Speaker, that for this year, in a 2019 General Appropriations Act, we have twenty-one billion additional funds for health. If you will recall, Mister Speaker, the NEP of 2018 had no HFEP budget. I'm not blaming this house, but the GAB reached the Senate with still no HFEP budget. The Senate put an amendment of twenty-one billion, sixteen billion of which are for Health Facilities Enhancement Program, Capital Outlay Infrastructure for Public Hospitals, Barangay Centers, Barangay Health Centers, Polyclinics. I would request my esteemed colleague to help us in asking the Department of Health, where did all the money go? Why are you not spending public funds allocated for the construction of healthcare centers, the procurement of equipment for these healthcare centers? There is a public health crisis. We have funds allocated by Congress, but why it's still not being spent? Also, Mister President, in the previous year's budget, we put in, I believe, two or three billion pesos in field health so that the invisible population of ten percent, meaning those who lie in the streets, walang kilalang mayor, hindi kailangan ng pirma ng congressman, para sila po ay libre na sa point of care o point of service. Meaning, lahat po ng walk-in sa mga pampublikong ospital ay dapat libre na. Hihingin po nun tulong ang ating mga kasamahan, lalong-lalo na si Congressman Gaita. Tulungan po ninyo ako magoversight sa GAH 2019 at 2018 na mag-expire ngayong Desembre sa 2018 at ang GAH 2019 mag-expire hopefully sa 2020 Desembre kung mapasaas sa Senado 'yung ating joint resolution. So that we can monitor what happened to the twenty-one billion GAH amendment of 2019. I join you in calling for greater public health engagement. I ask for your support in monitoring, scrutinizing where the twenty-one billion amendment for this year's budget as well as the field health expenditure or whether field health actually spent the three billion we gave them every year. And that is dedicated to the poorest of the poor na wala pong kilalang mayor o congressman o senador na mag-endorso ng kanilang mga pangangailangan. I appreciate what you said. Kailangan po maging makatao, makatarungan ang ating public health issues. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished lady from the Long District of Antike.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, please.
Uh, kaysa po ako ang kinatawang ito sa manifestation ng ating gagalanggalang na Congressman Loren Legarda para sa kanyang panawagan na magkaroon ng masusing pagbantay sa paggamit ng kulang na kulang na nga na budget para sa ating mga mamamayan, lalo na sa serbisyong pangkalusugan. Kaya nga po sa araw na ito, kasama rin po natin ang ating mga health workers dito po sa likuran at sila po mismo ay nag-aantabay na sa paggunita ng Nurses Month ay kilalanin 'yung nabanggit na ating gagalanggalang na kinatawan mula sa Antike, former Senator Loren Legarda. Na talagang dapat, lalo na sa oversight powers ng ating ahensya, ay makita natin na dapat piso, bawat senti mo na inilalaan sa Department of Health niyan o field health man niyan ay dapat ma-gastos para sa pangangailangan ng ating mga mamamayan. Kaya po, salamat po sa inyong manifestation at asahan niyo ang suporta ng kinatawang ito.
Maraming salamat, uh, gagalanggalang na kinatawan na mula sa bayan muna party list. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Ferdinand Gaita to the Committee on the Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to acknowledge the guests of Representative Ferdinand Gaita, nurses, health workers, and medical students from different medical schools, hospitals, LGUs, and health organizations. From Jose Reyes Memorial Medical Center Employee Union, National Kidney and Transplant Institution Employees Association, Hospital ng Gigin Bulakan, Philippine General Hospital, All U.P. Workers Union, FEU College of Medical Law Alliance of Medical Professionals, Philippine Medical Students Association, Alliance of Health Workers, Filipino Nurses United, Action Health Workers, Council for Health and Development, Coalition for People's Right to Health, and Health Alliance for Democracy. Mister Speaker.
Sa lahat ng mga panauin ng gagalanggalang na kinatawan mula bayan muna party list, welcome to the House of Representatives. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege R.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following for the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea. For Chairperson Manuel Sagabria, for Vice Chairperson Cyril Abweg Saldivar, Hil Acosta, Franz Joseph Alvarez. Members Sofornio Valoso, Jose Jun Ong, Dulce Anhofer, and Ed Christopher Go. For the Committee on Agrarian Reform, nominate and elect Chairperson Kong Solomon Chungalao. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General will please take note. Proceed, Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Agrarian Reform Chairperson Solomon Chungalao, Vice Chairperson Herarder Espina, Nestor Fong Huan, Dato Sin Suwat, Tyrone Agabas, Marisol Nagonyon Natibidad. Members Abdullah Dimaporo, Wilfredo Invegra, Noel Villanueva, Hil Acosta, Ana Villarasa Suarez, Alfredo Garbin, Rizaldeco, Rodolfo Albano, Aleta Suarez. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The following names read are hereby elected to the Committee on Agrarian Reform. The Secretary General will please take note. Yes, Majority Floor Leader, please proceed.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for Assistant Majority Leader of the Committee on Rules Congressman Tyrone Agabas. I so move, Mister Speaker.
There being no objection, chair hears none. Uh, motion is hereby approved. Secretary General, please take note.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following for the Committee on Health. Vice Chairperson Sandra Eriquel, Resurrection Akop, members Robert A. Barberz, Maria Lucil Nava, Elizaldeco, Bobby Pacquiao. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Uh, the following names mentioned are hereby elected to the Committee on Health. Mister Secretary General, please take note. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Foreign Affairs. Members Elizaldeco, Bobby Pacquiao, Juliet Uy, Miki Violago, Malu Acosta Alba, Lorna Labad Labad, Emery Disson, Lucil Nava, Cheryll De Loso Montalia. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Uh, section, please take note. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. Member Marisol Nagonyon Natibidad. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Uh, there being none. Um, motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. Members Dahlia Loyola, Elizaldeco, VJ Lacson. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Section.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for Special Committee on Land Use. Vice Chairperson Presley de Jesus. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Agriculture and Food. Members Maria Lucil Nava, Marisol Natibidad, VJ Lacson. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The following names read are hereby elected as members of the Committee on Agriculture and Food. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Mindanao Affairs. Vice Chairperson Ansa Rudin Adyong Munir Abrison and Bobby Pacquiao. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for Vice Chairperson of Committee on Labor and Employment Rodolfo Albano. Members Elizaldeco and VJ Lacson. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Uh, the following names read are now elected as members of the Committee on Labor and Employment. Section, please take note.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to make changes on the Committee on Legislative Affairs Franchises, Legislative Franchises. For member Congressman Sharong Galin, Vice Congressman Christopher de Venesia. For member Congressman Dulce Anhofer, Vice Congressman Diograsa Saveliano. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Uh, the following names read, uh, the changes are hereby, uh, approved. Section, please take note.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Information and Communication Technology. Members Marisol Natibidad, Elizaldeco, VJ Lacson. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Mister Secretary General, please take note. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Public Accounts. Chairperson Michael Defensor. Vice Chairperson Luis Rey Villaferte, Luis Ferrer the Fourth, and Congressman Ron Salo. As members, Eileen Ermita Buain, Curdo Rico, Haresco, Anas Rudin Adyong, Sol Aragonés, Divine Yu, Lollipop Disson, Angel Amante Matba, Lorna Silverio, Tashadin Matba, Gavini Pancho, Pablo Ortega, Alan Reyes, and Tyrone Agabas. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. Vice Chairperson Sol Aragonés. Member Lucil Nava. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. Vice Chairperson VJ Lacson and member Elizaldeco. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Visayas Development Christine Tutol. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect as Vice Chairperson for the Committee on Welfare of Children Maria Lourdes Acosta Alba. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Raiding Industry. Vice Chairperson Maria Teresa Colantes. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Transportation. Vice Chairperson Ramon Guico III. Members Ben Kanama, Michael Edgar Aglipay. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Is the gentleman from Pangasinan is objected? There's no objection. The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries. Vice Chairperson Romel Angara, Vice Chairperson Hil Acosta Jr. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. Congresswoman Sol Aragonés. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I withdraw that motion because it has a duplicate from the previous motion read earlier. Sol Aragonés has been mentioned already. It's duplication. I withdraw the previous motion on Sol Aragonés because it's been read twice.
Okay. Motion is approved?
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on National Defense and Security. Members Presley de Jesus, Adriano Ebcas, Bobby Pacquiao. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect Committee on Youth and Sports Development. Members Elizaldeco, Dale Malapitan, Yul Servo Nieto, Antonio Albano, Samantha Luis Vargas Alfonso, Alisa Shinatan, Edward Maceda, Faustino Michael D. III. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect for the Committee on Tourism. Vice Chairperson Hil Acosta Jr. Members Elizaldeco, Michael Edgar Aglipay, Marvi Marinio. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on National Defense and Security the following for as members. Representatives Presley de Jesus, Adriano Ebcas, and Alberto Bobby Pacquiao. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The following names read are hereby elected as members of the Committee on Defense.
Mister Speaker, I move to nominate as part of the maj... In behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples. As Vice Chairperson, Representative Maximo Dalog. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following to the Committee on Natural Resources. As Vice Chairperson Representative Maria Lourdes Acosta Alba. As member Representative Elizalde Co. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. As Vice Chairperson Representative Samantha Vargas Alfonso. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Do I hear any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I nominate and elect to the Committee on Information and Communication Technology. The following as members. Representative Marisol Naganyo Natibidad, Representative Elizalde Co., and Representative V.G. Lacson. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following as Vice Chairpersons. Representatives Ansa Rudin Adjong and Tyrone Agabas. As member Representative Elizalde Co. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker-
Yes, Majority Floor Leader.
Yes. Let me reiterate, let me state that the previous representatives that I nominated are to the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Housing and Urban Development. As Vice Chairperson Representative Florencia Noel. As members Representatives Victoria Paul Daza. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following to the Committee on Games and Amusement. As members Representatives Robert Ace Barbers, Eric Pineda, V.G. Lacson, Alberto Bobby Pacquiao. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The following names read are hereby elected as members of the Committee on Games and Amusements.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. As Vice Chairperson Representative Bambol Tolentino, J.J. Suarez, and Eric Pineda. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Special Committee on Sustainable Development Goals. As member Representative Yeda Marie Romualdes. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Social Services. As Vice Chairperson Representative Ben Canama. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to nominate as part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Foreign Affairs. The following as members. Representatives Elizalde Co. and Alberto Bobby Pacquiao. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Special Committee on Food Security. As Vice Chairperson Representative Henaro Limao Álvarez. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Economic Affairs. As member Representative Robert Ace Barbers. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on East ASEAN Growth Area. As Vice Chairpersons. Representatives Ansa Rudin Adjong and Representative Munir Abrison. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Disaster Management. As Vice Chairperson Representative Jun Babasa and Representative Presley de Jesus. And as member Representative Elizalde Co. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to greet the guests of Representative Franz Castro of ACT Teachers Partilese, her guests from Caloocan Public Elementary and Secondary Teachers Federation. Mr. Speaker.
Binabati namin ang mga panauhin ng ating kinatawan mula sa ACT Teachers. Mabuhay kayong lahat. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we reopen the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to extend by another hour the privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Gabby Bordado for his unprivileged speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, the distinguished gentleman is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Coincidentally, Mr. Speaker, my speech will also tackle Greta, Thornbirds, and climate change. So, may I request, Mr. Speaker, that I'll just submit the copy of my speech so that it will form part of the records. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, distinguished gentleman. Thank you. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Franz Castro for her privileged speech. So move.
Ang ating kagalang-galang na kinatawan mula sa ACT Teachers, you are hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Ginong speaker, mga kapwa ko mababatas, magandang gabi sa inyong lahat. Sa darating na Sabado, ikalima ng Oktubre, ay pandaigdigang araw na mga guro. Tinakda ang World Teachers Day kada taon simula 1994 bilang commemoration sa araw ng pormal na pagtanggap o adaption noong 1966. Sa recommendation concerning the status of teachers sa isang special intergovernmental conference on the status of teachers na International Labor Organization at United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. Complementary instrument naman ang 1997 recommendation concerning the status of higher education teaching personnel. Ang 1966 ILO UNESCO recommendation ay tinuturing na isang landmark international document kung saan ang lahat na mga member states ng ILO at UNESCO kabila ng Pilipinas ay sumumpa na igagalang nila ang mga ekonomiko, professional, at political na karapatan na mga guro sa pambubliko at pribadong sektor. Nakatitik sa rekamanasyong ito ang mga pandaigdigang pamantayan sa ibat-ibang aspeto gaya ng training and preparations, salaries and other remuneration, employment, conditions of work, professional development, consultation in policymaking, and teachers organizations. Nakahugat ang mga pamantayang ito sa di makakailang katotohanan na ang karapatan sa edukasyon ay isang batayang karapatang pantao. Kakabit ng katotohanan ito ang napakahalagang gampani na mga guro sa pagbibigay at pagpapaunlad ng edukasyon at ang hindi matatawarang say-say ng kanilang kontribusyon sa pagsulong ng individual at ng lipunan. Implikasyon ng 1966 recommendation upang mapangalagaan ng edukasyon ng kabataan dapat pangalagaan ang kalagayan ng kailangan na mga guro. Walang magaganap na tunay na pagsulong sa interes at kaunaran ng bansa kung hindi tunay na isinusulo ang karapatan na mga guro. Ang ikalima ng Oktubre sa makatuwid ay araw ng pagpahalaga at pagprotekta at paggarantya sa mga karapatan na mga guro. Sa ating bansa, pinaunahan na mga makabayang guro sa ilalim ng Alliance of Concerned Teachers ang makabuluhang commemorasyon ang pandaigdigang araw na mga guro. Simula dalawang libo at sa pamamagitan ng ibat-ibang programa ng kolektibong pagkilos at protesta, di nahiwalay ang commemorasyon ng World Teachers Day sa mga kampanya ng sektor para sa salary increase. Hindi lamang para sa mga guro, kundi para na rin sa mga non-teaching at lahat na mga government employees na ang mga rank and file at para sa mga umento sa mga benepisyo gaya ng chok allowance at clothing allowance. Nakakabit ang World Teachers Day sa mga kampanya laban sa budget cuts sa edukasyon, ibat-ibang iskima ng privatisasyon sa sektor, shortage sa mga guro at kawanee, classroom at mga pasilidad. Di makatuwirang deductions ng GSIS, mababang kompensasyon at karahasang bumibiktima sa mga gurong nagsisilbi sa eleksyon at iba pa. Salamat sa mga kolektibong pagkilos at protesta ito na tumitingkad kada taon sa World Teachers Day. Nagbunga ng ilang tagumpay ang kampanya na mga guro gaya ng pagtaas noong 2012 ng chok allowance. Matapos mapako ng dekada sa 700 pesos. Pagtaas ng clothing allowance, creation of teaching items noong 2015 ng higit sa tao ng 10,000 lamang. Upang maidsan ang matinding teacher shortage, GSIS reforms, pagiging bolontaryo ng pagsisilbi sa eleksyon, at mas mataas na kompensasyon package sa pamamagitan ng Election Service Reform Act at iba pa. Noong Inero 29, 2016, ipinasa ang Republic Act 10743, o an act declaring the 5th day of October of every year as the National Teachers Day. Matapos ilang taon ay sinulong sa kamarang ito ang panukala ng dati nating kasamahan at kapwa ko pinatawan ang ACT Teachers Partilese representative Antonio Tinio. But speak with any teacher and she and he will say, having a day with our name or it is good, but turning the ideals of that day into reality will even better. Indeed, no one could truly say that teachers are given high status where salaries, benefits, working conditions, and socio-political situations attest to the contrary. The 1966 recommendation urges government that teacher salaries should reflect the importance of society, of the teaching function, and hence the importance of teachers as well as the responsibilities of all kinds which fall upon them from time of their entry into the service. Letter B, compare favorably with salaries paid in other occupations requiring similar or equivalent qualification. And lastly, provide teachers with the means to ensure a reasonable standard of living for themselves and their families as well as to invest in further education or in pursuit of cultural activities thus enhancing their professional qualifications. But this is certainly far from reality. As a public school teachers are paid less than other employees with less qualifications such as mere candidate soldiers or poor or police trainees in government and call center agents in the private sector. Private school teachers, especially those in the so-called locos schools, are paid even lower with some having salaries of 3,000 pesos, especially with the regressive excise tax brought by trade. The bitter joke among public and private school teachers is that their take-home pay really cannot take them home and that London is the only way to go. The struggle for substantial salary increase therefore still remains. We believe that the 31.1 billion already in the 2020 budget for salary increase is a victory that should be created, that should be credited to every social media campaign, every congressional lobbying, every rally or street protest, and every mass leave bravely launched by our teachers and their unions. But this is a victory based on justice and the victory does not even be amplified considering that we have yet to see the concrete proposal coming from the Duterte administration and such proposal will not be enough to light the spike of prices of basic commodities and services. Last year again answered with usual excuse of no budget and salaries are already comparable to those in the private sector. We reiterate, una, kung may budget support gigantic construction contracts militaristang pamahalaan, mas dapat may budget para sa mga guro at kawanee sa edukasyon at batayang karapatan. Ikalawa, matuturing na comparable talaga ang mga sahod ng kawanee sa pamahalaan kung nakikipagkarera ang gobyerno sa nakabababang pasahod ng pribadong sektor. We therefore call on this administration to heed our proposal for substantial salary increase specifically these representations proposals amendments to the 2020 budget. We also urge its to submit immediately to the House its concrete proposal for the three tranche salary increase. The 1966 recommendation also urges government that the total, the social security protection of teachers should take account of their particular conditions of employment. It has provisions on the medical and sickness benefits of teachers among others. In short, government should take care of the health of teachers. Nakadidismaya na ang nanapanaluna na mga guro noong 2019 budget na medical allowance na 500 kada teacher ay isinailalim ng pangulo sa conditional veto batay sa maling pagbasa sa batas. Pinag-iisa o isinasa ilalim ang libreng annual checkup and other medical benefits na mga guro na minamandato ng magna carta on public school teachers sa so-called universal health care. Sa ibang salita, ay iasa na naman sa field health na bukod sa hindi libre ay bat-bat pa ng samot sa aring problema at anomalia. Dahil dito, inuulit ko ang panawagan na mga guro na mapangalagaan ang kanilang kalusugan. Iniiling namin na una ibigay na sa lalong madaling panahon ang 500 peso allowance for medical exam na pinonduhan natin noong 2019 budget. At ikalawa, ibalik sa 2020 budget ang tinanggal na benepisyo ito. Para sa lahat naman na mga guro, kabila ang mga nasa private schools, mariing panawagan namin ang agarang reforma sa field health. Kabila na ang matagal ng reklamong delayed or non-remitance of contributions at imbesigasyon sa iba pang mga anomalyang pumapalibot dito. Malaki rin ang pagpapahalagang ibinigay ng 1966 recommendations sa mga organisasyon at unyon na mga guro. Kaya tinutulak ito ang mga pamahalaan na konsultahin. Ang mga ito sa bawat pulisiyang binubuo ukol sa ibat-ibang aspeto na kanilang propesyon at employment. Gaya ng disciplinary procedures and performance standards. Pinalalakas din ang 1966 recommendation ang existing international instruments. Gaya ng 1948 Freedom of Association and Protection of the Right to Organize Convention. 1949 Right to Organize and Collective Bargaining Convention. 1951 Equal Remuneration Convention. 1958 Anti-Discrimination in Employment and Occupation Convention in ILO. At 1960 Convention Against Discrimination in Education ng UNESCO. Marami na ang naguugnay sa demokrasya at edukasyon at sa demokratikong karapatan na mga guro sa demokratikong karapatan sa buong lipunan. On World Teachers Day, we need to remember- we need to remember that bullied and demoralized students do not do well. Neither do teachers. Like many other risky and socially highly valuable professionals, teachers everywhere should be protected, not persecuted. Hindi matatapos ang privilehiyong talumpate ko sa pandaigdigang araw na mga guro ng walang pagkudina na nagpapatuloy na atake laban sa maaktibistang guro at edukador at progresibong organisasyon at union na mga guro at education personnel. Mr. Speaker, nagpapatuloy ang red tagging ng AFP, PNP, DILG, and NTF LCAC laban sa lahat na mga guro sa Alliance of Concerned Teachers, All U.P. Academic Employees Union, sa ACT Teachers Party List, at sa akin mismo bilang Enemies of the State, Legal Fronts, at Instigator of Rebellion Puno. Hindi parin tinitigil ang pagpaparatang sa mga eskwelahan kabila na ang state and private universities and colleges bilang recruiting grounds di umano ng NPA upang ilatag ang peking batayan para pasuki ng militar at pulisya ang mga eskwelahan at pakitirin ang demokratikong espasyo sa mga ito. Wala pang pananagutan ang mga utak at nagtatanggol sa iligal na profiling laban sa mga organisasyon ito. Isang malawakang union busting na isinasagawa gamit ang pera ng taong bayan upang patahimikin at takutin ang mga tunay na nagsusulong sa interes at karapatan na mga guro at sektor ng edukasyon. At demonisahin imbis na sagutin ang mga lihimong karainan. May dadagdag pa dito, Mr. Speaker. Youong ginagawang red tagging vilifying sa ating mga lumad teachers. Sa lahat ng nasa likod na malawakang paglabag na ito na mga karapatang pantao na mga guro, kawanee, at mag-aaral, wala kayong credibilidad na humarap sa sino bang guro at batihin sila ng Happy World Teachers' Day dahil sinasalula ninyo ang bawat letra ng 1966 recommendation at ang buong esensya ng World Teachers' Day. You are all bullies, demoralizers, and persecutors of teachers, and people like you have no place at all in the decent humane society. Hands off our teachers, hands off our schools. We in the progressive teachers movement have always been pushing for the genuine commemoration of World Teachers' Day and now National Teachers' Day. The genuine celebration of teachers is honoring their rights and addressing their economic, social, and economic and political struggles. Sa bawat guro na nanatiling magsilbi sa kabila ng kakulangan at kahirapan, sa bawat guro nakikipagbugkos sa kapwa guro at ibang marginalisadong sektor upang igpawan ang mga kakulangang ito, sa bawat guro makabayan at lumalaban, isang mapagpalayang pandaigdigang araw na mga guro sa inyong lahat. Mabuhay kayong lahat, padayon. Salamang, ginong speaker. Maraming salamat.
Maraming salamat, Red, sa ating kagalagalan na kinatawan ng ACT Teachers. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speeches of Representatives Franz Castro and Representative Bordado to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to close the privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Yes, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Kate Belmonte. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The honorable gentleman from Quezon City, from the minority, is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the minority, I move to elect the Honorable Kaloy Zarate of Bayan Muna to the Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy Committee. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. Thank you, gentleman from Quezon City. Yes, majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speeches of Representatives Jose Enrique Garcia III and Bernadette Herrera D. delivered on September 24 and 30, 2019 respectively, to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Secretary General, please take note.
Mr. Speaker-
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session until tomorrow, 3 o'clock PM, October 1, 2019.
Session is suspended until 3 PM tomorrow, October 1st. Thank you.